Good afternoon. I'd like to call the November 19th, 2013 City Council meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco, Hotchkiss, House?
Here.
Mario?
Here.
Rouse, White, Mayor Schneider?
Here. And Mr. Hotchkiss just walked in. Any changes to the agenda?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Public comment. I have a few speaker slips here. We have two minutes up at the podium right there. We'll start with Kate Long's story, to be followed by Bob Hanson.
Madam Mayor and members of the Santa Barbara City Council, I am back at the public podium for the Gazette. Today is the 150th anniversary of President Abraham Lincoln's Gettysburg Address. You'll remember, he was dedicating a cemetery where 100,000 soldiers had given their lives. The issue was one of equality. As stated in the Declaration of Independence, all men are created equal, not just white. All people, I should say. And he was asking that the people, we, the people, preserve our democracy, preserve the country that had a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. I will submit to you that now, with our politicians bought by corporations, with a corporatocracy gripping our government, that we have a government for itself. The money circulates within the administration. The politicians change, but the structure of the Machiavellian machine remains. Taxpayer-paid lawyers and appointed administrators collude and conspire and cover up wrongdoing.
Thank you.
It is the retaliation against the whistleblowers, the activists, and the advocates where you will be brought to account.
Your time's up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bob Hanson will be followed by David Diaz.
Steve said he was just going to talk for 30 seconds. Can he talk before me? And I have just another minute. Is it all right?
Steve, you can speak.
Is that fine?
You can speak right now, Mr. Price. That's fine. Just when you're done, fill out a speaker slip for the...
Oh, I already filled it out.
Oh, okay. Go right ahead.
Good afternoon. Of course, I could elaborate on all that Kate Smith and Bob Hanson have to say, but I think there's one thing that holds our society together, and I saw it in the newspaper the other day. I think the roundabout at Las Pecitas and Cliff is a good idea. Roundabouts keep the world together.
Mr. Hanson?
As I came in, I talked to Mr. Grant House, and he was at a fundraiser for Deborah Barnes. She does laundry of love, also does some feedings and helps the people less fortunate in our community. And they raised about $800, or...
No, $8,500.
Eighty-five. To help her program. It's amazing. They go to the different laundromats and the people stand in line and get their laundry done once a week. There was a documentary that came out on Showtime called "The Untold History of America" by Oliver Stone and a professor, and it was quite interesting. Well, we have Santa Barbara's untold history of the war on its unhoused citizens and others. In the '70s, there was a Zebra Squad. After that was the Baker Boys, then Clemmons Lemons in the '90s, and then a black car zoomed around in the 2000s. Then we came up with the Park Rangers, and Bob Casey as a host up on outreach up on Upper State Street mostly. And then we came up with the host program. Then we had the people in their blue and yellow shirts. And then Tocasa cooked cookies to raise money and stuff and asked people to make donations there. Now we have Mr. Hove, Officer Hove, and he has six rooms. That's good. And one-way tickets out of town. And a friend of mine, Daryl, who's an alcoholic, drinks vodka, he put him in detox down in LA. Well, we need to have it detox locally because there's more than just one Daryl in this world. Alcohol is just a vicious addiction. So anyway, this week in crime time, the Sentinel paper, Matt writes about somebody in the park, and he's a homeless person, transient, he uses that word. Then he goes along and says some other things. And he gets this information from the Santa Barbara Police Department that this is a transient.
Your time's up, please.
Time is up?
Yep.
Okay. So anyway, so he goes transient, then he sits there and calls them lowlife and bums. I don't think we need to do that. We need to have a statement from our community that we don't call people names.
Thank you.
We can say other things about it, but not a name.
David Diaz will be followed by Nancy McCready.
Good afternoon, Santa Barbara. I was in an incident on the MTD the other day where there was an alcoholic yelling and screaming and threatening, at the same time crying like a three-year-old for forgiveness. And the bus driver was trying to contact the main station there for assistance and asking for a code, but there was no response. It turns out, there are so many channels, nobody knows what channel to be on for emergencies. And I was a witness to that. That was amazing to see. And I was even telling the guy, a very strong voice, to calm down, stop talking this way, no cussing, and women and children were on the bus. Amazing. So I did some more research, and with regards to the MTD and the strike that's been ongoing, apparently the government, various government agencies have a volunteer member on the board. Year and a half of nothing getting done. Maybe it's time to change the board members so the director or manager, Sherry, of MTD can do what's supposed to be done, as opposed to elongating and dragging everything on because it's very unfair to the community and to the drivers. And one of my big things is, when it comes to medical, maybe the unions and the MTD should sit down and just let the drivers get their own insurance. Give them some money so they can get their own insurance and not have to use that as a tool to elongate things because it's very disruptive and it's creating a lot of undue pressure in the community. Thank you very much.
Nancy McCready will be followed by Trevor Martinson. The final speaker will be Ethan Schenkman.
This morning, I did some research. My son came to me and told me that without any knowledge beforehand, all of his backpack with his paperwork, his blankets, and everything is gone. The city contracts with the Creek Cleanup Crew with Service Systems, or ServiceMaster. And I found out from ServiceMaster that they send all stuff that is picked up to Marbork. Marbork told me that everything goes out to the dump. We used to have, the city used to have a thing where we would hold homeless people's important stuff for a few days, where they could come and collect it. I don't remember how it was worked. I don't know how it operated or who operated it, but this was what was happening. Now, it is no longer in place, I understand. And talking to different social workers, it's really difficult for the social workers to forget about the positive movement that they have for these people that they're working with, to put them in housing and whatever. But instead, they have to go back, get their birth certificates, get their IDs, get their blankets and their backpacks back up together, and there's some clothes for them, instead of going forward with their lives. So I just want to let you know that these things are happening to the people out there, and it would be so much nicer if we could get it together to have a thing for them to at least come and pick them up, a 10-day hold or something, where they can come get their stuff. Yeah, Father John talked to me, too, and he says, "Please let them know that I am with you." And he did say to me that it's countermount to illegal search and seizure.
Thank you.
I don't know if that's true or not.
Trevor Martinson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, as you know, there is an appeal that will be heard next week regarding the 510 North Sausalcoatis Project by People Self-Help. I was informed by staff that the project is not going to have story polls installed. Now, this is a little strange in that ABR Chair Zink said if the project would be appealed, story polls should be required. Staff says no. Well, I know city funds is involved in this, and I think that we should protect our money here by making those story polls go up because many of the people on the Haley Street corridor, English is their second language. And when they ask me, "How high is this project going to be?", I have to point to a telephone pole and say, "That's 30 feet." Point to the power pole and say, "That's 45 feet." And the project is going to be approximately 43 feet high. And their comment immediately is, "Muy alto y gorda." You know? And I think we need this. I don't think that we should bypass this because anyone who comes in front of this board, or the boards, or the council that is a private developer, they have to do this. Staff, make sure that it's done. So thank you for your consideration.
Ethan Schenkman? I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left. You want to turn the button on so the green light goes on?
Okay, testing.
There you go.
Happy birthday, Elaine Schneider. I understand that you had your birthday yesterday. So happy birthday. I gave you some seconds. Hee-hee. Now, last town hall meeting, you suggested advisory interviews that I write follow-up as to why my presentation should be represented again due to the incursion from last delivery, as already observed under Randy Rouse serving as pro-term November 5. One, I did not get equal time to speak as other interviewees did for advisory panels as further administered in the second interview dates to reflect November 12. Two, having where council began hearing 1.5 hours after specified scheduled time, Randy Rouse is recorded to have said that we had "unlimited" time thereafter to speak prior from interrupting me to "hurry up during presentation" that is already outlined in bullets under my advisory application for the council. Three, realizing that your office is already aware of this incident, I'm sure that the city does not intend to give the impression that handicapped folks would be minimized, derailed, talked over, or ignored decency that would extend to other candidates within a microphone podium setting. Because of my notes or any application are outlined, it is important that the demographic I represent benefit uninterrupted attention to the items I listed on advisory application for televised broadcast. This time perhaps sends whatever issues my appraisal of employee performance and conduct during my experiences with Downtown Parking Commission. I do need to emphasize that over numerous consecutive meetings, I have participated. No record of such incursion occurred during DPC morning activities. Below is some legal code outlining provision under the ADA to support my request, which participation in unequal benefit and that advantage accommodation that is not equal to that is afforded to other individuals. So it seems that basically you have set a precedent already, a pattern of giving extended accommodation to other people who are not handicapped while telling me that basically I don't get the same benefit as handicapped.
Thank you.
And that would not be compliant.
Your time's up. Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions?
No, we don't. Thank you. Time's up.
Has no questions for the record.
That concludes public comment. We move over to the consent calendar.
Item number one, introduction of ordinance to establish Brinkerhoff Avenue as a one-way street. Recommendation that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Chapter 10.60 of the municipal code by revising Section 10.60.030, establishing Brinkerhoff Avenue as a one-way street.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the readings. Anyone need to pull any item off? Or is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move the consent calendar, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. That concludes the consent calendar. You're good to go back there with Brinkerhoff folks. Thank you very much. Move on to item number nine.
Adoption of updated traffic impact significance thresholds with recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only. A resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara establishing updated traffic impact significance thresholds consistent with the city traffic management strategy and the non-residential growth management program.
Thank you. Mr. Dayton?
Madam Mayor, while they're setting up, I've received some communications that some folks would like this decision to be postponed or rescheduled. What is the process for that?
Well, what I would suggest is have the presentation by staff, and I know there's some public speakers who are probably going to speak to that, and then it's up to four or more of us if we want to do that.
Oh, to put off making a decision?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Dayton.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, good afternoon. We're here today in a follow-along to implementation of the general plan, and specifically also the traffic management strategy that you all reviewed and approved in March. And what we're doing is, now we're implementing the pieces. This is one of the pieces that moves us forward in making that traffic management strategy real within our design review process. So I want to, what I want to do is, I want to kind of back you up to the general plan real briefly, get you into the traffic management strategy, and explain how these traffic thresholds updated implement what you've approved. So you will recall the 26 impacted intersections. This is the 2030 impact analysis from the 2011 General Plan EIR. And this was the problem that we presented to the council as a part of the general plan. And so we had to, the council was, and their decision was, hey, we understand we're going to have these impacts in 2030 with the build-out of the land use that we've approved. And so, unavoidable, we're going to override the fact that we're going to have these impacts, but at the same time, we're going to do things that will lessen the impact on this community with the build-out of the land development we've approved. So what you did is, in terms of the traffic management strategy, we had a goal, and that goal was to utilize existing transportation capacity efficiently and to reserve constrained transportation capacity for high priority land uses. This is the concept that, hey, we only have a little bit of traffic capacity left. And so if we're going to approve a land development, let's make sure it's the one we want. And so this strategy flushed out, what it did was, it limits development within outlined areas, and it focuses land development growth within the street grid. And you may recall, in the traffic management strategy, this graphic that's up there now that developed based on the traffic modeling data we had, we said if we develop 1,000 square feet of commercial in the green area, it's going to produce twice as less or half the trips it would in the other areas. So what the council did in the traffic management strategy is, we restricted development in what we call the outlined areas, the Mesa, the Upper State Street, the Riviera, and the Coast Village Road area. And we loosened up quite a bit the ability for land development to go in, in the downtown. And then finally, one of the objectives that we wanted to achieve in that strategy was, we want to streamline land development traffic review. Traffic review in the last 20 years has been expensive, and it's been, quite frankly, a roadblock, sometimes a good reason, sometimes for not-so-good reasons, a roadblock to development. So we wanted to lift that roadblock and that cost. So what does this mean? This means, in the traffic management strategy, that most projects now get the green light. And as you may have recalled, for the past two decades, our traffic threshold was, if you add any traffic to an intersection that's impacted, in other words, that .77 volume-to-capacity ratio, then the answer is no, straight out. And if you happen to be a project that could get overriding considerations, you had to get a very expensive EIR to get that decision before the council. And when you look at the sentence, the city council determined this cumulative impact, that this is all those impacted intersections. So the council overrode that and said, "Okay, now projects can go through. We get it. We understand. It's going to be congested, but you can go through." And then the new bar, if you will, became the project-specific impact level. That was the deciding factor, that this will, if a project raises to a level of project-specific impact, that's an indication this project is taking a disproportionate share of the remaining roadway capacity. So that became our new test, the project-specific threshold. The existing project-specific threshold that we have today is evaluated against existing traffic patterns. So a project's proposed, and that project, in order to evaluate a project-specific impact, you have to do a traffic study to find out what are the existing volumes, and then you measure that to see if there's a .01 increase in volume-to-capacity ratio over .77. That's the way that one works today. The updated threshold that we're proposing is essentially the same thing. It's the same amount. In other words, if a project increases 1% of an intersection's capacity, that's still .01, if it increases it, then you'll have an impact. But the main difference we're talking about is, we're focusing our attention on the 26 intersections that were in the general plan EIR. We're saying, hey, these are the intersections that are issues. So if your project is so big that you're going to move one of those intersections a full .01 in volume-to-capacity ratio, then we need to look at this in the context of what we're doing.
We have a question. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Dayton, what is the metric we use to determine how much a project is? Is square footage? Is it type of use? What do we use to make those percentages jump?
Yes, both of those. It's type of use and size of use. And then also, you need to also consider what's on the ground today. So we always subtract out whatever's on the ground today with what someone wants to do in the future. A good example of that is in Upper State Street, there's a project, I think it's 87 units on Upper State Street. That project, the housing project, will actually reduce in traffic because of the existing commercial that's on the ground.
We'll talk about that one a little bit later. So if, for example, you have a commercial project that's an office building, and it's going to have 30 offices with 30 employees, and so you have a metric that says this many employees, this many square foot per office, or whatever's going to generate this amount of traffic. Now, there are other mitigations, such as flex time scheduling and all that, that could be applied to that. Is that anywhere in the metric, or is it just kind of a textbook way that we look at this in terms of development and intersection impacts?
The traffic demand management strategies were also a very intimate part of this traffic management strategy, and we haven't gotten to that yet. But that is something, mitigation for that eventual traffic impact is something that's very important. And there, if you may recall, there were some strategies specifically listed in the environmental impact report. Some are more attractive than others. But yes, that is something that needs to be done in conjunction with what we're doing here.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So again, the main difference here is that you're looking at those 26 intersections. Now, how does that benefit us? Why is that a good thing for development in terms of, if I'm a developer and I'm coming in and I want to see if I fit in under the bar, the new bar, the raised bar of traffic capacity, it's going to be less expensive for me to do that under this threshold that's updated? Let me explain. So in the existing threshold we have, you have to measure, you have to have a traffic engineer count intersections in the city around that project to get the existing amount of traffic that's on the ground. And then you have to go in and you have to see if adding the traffic of the project you're proposing will meet the project-specific test. In this case, we don't need to know the existing traffic volumes whatsoever. We're relying on the EIR that you spent the money on, and that money will be spread out so that someone doesn't have to do the same analysis over again. And therefore, what we, and I'll get into the process here, before I do, the cumulative threshold wouldn't change, and then the airport area, we treat exactly the same as we would in the airport, and that is that the city of Galida and Caltrans and the county, which is mainly the interested parties out in the airport, we would follow their rules and look to them for the CEQA guidelines in those areas. So in the practical sense, someone comes into our office, and Steve Foley is the supervising traffic engineer, and where he would have said no, time and time again, and you know, since he's had his job, now he says, "Oh, your project has, it's going to add traffic to a cumulative impacted threshold." That's okay. Council blessed that. They did an overriding considerations. We have a document that shows the CEQA overriding considerations you made, and that document's used, and it's end-of-story development forward. Now, if Steve Foley says, "You know what? I'm looking at the traffic you're generating, and I think it might actually be a project-specific impact." Now, before, when he made that statement, a developer was now, had to do an expensive traffic study. They're $10,000 to $25,000. What we did in July is, we enacted a fee, you enacted a $5,500 fee, and we're on contract with a consultant that says, if Steve says possibly, we go to that consultant, they spend $5,500, and they get a technical memorandum that's ready for EIR showtime, if that's required, that says, up or down, yes, you have a project-specific impact, or no, you don't. And then we use that as the environmental document to guide us from steps thereon. Some of the concerns you've heard, which are not new, is, well, wouldn't this process stop development? The answer is possibly. What's changed, though, is we are gone from stopping most developments now to stopping very, very few. So, and that's what you did in the traffic management strategy, and that is just the implementation of what this is. In terms of traffic levels over time, and how the council navigates with this threshold, is we will, there is a fee that you enacted in July, that's a very nominal fee that goes with every single development based on its size. And because that fee is tied to the amount of traffic that they generate, when we have enough money to, in that fund, to reevaluate the model, that will be the right time to reevaluate the model. And what we'll do is, we'll count all city intersections, all 50 of them again, and this information will come back to council, just so it's like an adaptive management program. You get to see, how are we doing? How is this progressing? Are we growing like we said we would? Were the assumptions we made wrong in the past? Answer those questions, and then you can make adjustments to reevaluating the traffic management strategy, or the number of intersections that we're in, the 26 intersections. And then eventually, we're going to have a mitigation plan, which that's forthcoming in the new year. So this is the council action, is to update this traffic impact threshold. I just want to say, I did receive many phone calls. I did receive the email from Lisa Plowman. We had a stakeholders group, if you recall, and they're in the stakeholders group, and we went through the whole traffic management strategy with them. And if you recall, there were some pretty fundamental disagreements at the end of the day when we came to this room to approve the traffic management strategy. And it's our belief that these are the same disagreements. This group would really like to raise the level and have more, bigger projects sooner in the process. And so we are absolutely willing to have conversations and continue this, and not have a decision in council, and explain exactly what the nuance is or something. or something that, that is not understood.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, the way you describe it makes it sound very precise, but I suspect it isn't. Am I, I don't want to put you on the, on the mark here, but am I correct? I mean, we're sort of, we're using numbers, and we don't really know how it's going to work out.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, no, I think we're really confident how it's going to work out. I think that this traffic management strategy is extremely progressive, and I think that is, it is pretty historic from the standpoint of Santa Barbara for two reasons. One, the council's made a decision, we're kind of at an apex where we don't have a lot of traffic capacity build-out, nor do we have money to do it. And whereas in the past, Santa Barbara said no to traffic congestion, the council's saying, hey, we really need to have economic growth, that might mean more congestion. And so we're, we're allowing the projects you've approved in the general plan to move forward, rather than to be constrained like they were with previous traffic thresholds.
Can you be so precise as to say, okay, this project, if it increases traffic, will mean delays of another 30 seconds at a particular intersection at a certain time of day?
Absolutely. Their 1% change is a recognizable delay to the public in the peak hour.
Recognizable meaning?
It means the more of those 1% you get.
What, but I mean, is that 30 seconds or when you say recognizable? I'm just, as a driver, I'm wondering what that's.
I'd have to do the calculations, but one of the things that you, to recognize is, when you're at these, these intersections are at, mainly at LOC right now.
Right.
So, you know, LOS is actually designed to emulate what you all feel at an intersection. And unfortunately, it's done with numbers. But the feeling you're supposed to have at a level of service C intersection is during the peak hour, sometimes you don't make it through the signal all the way, and you get stopped again. So once you get to that point, the public is highly aware that that's, they're not getting through the signal.
Right.
And so when you add more traffic to that level, it's more intense than if you had added it way below and not noticed it at all. And, and pretty soon, it's, you know, it's two cycles, or certain movements are two cycles.
So it would, it would increase from one to two cycles to get through that light?
With 1%, not precisely, no. It would, it would probably be, well, the difference, depends on where the signal is, is at the time, but when you move into the D range, now you're, you're talking about two times.
Increase cycle, good, thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to go back to a couple of things that I'm hearing Mr. Rouse and Mr. Hotchkiss asking questions, which I think might, there might be some help in, in returning to the, to the history a little bit. My recollection, and, and my recollections are fuzzy, and, and probably we're off to begin with, so that's why it'd be good, Mr. Dayton, to step in here. Measure E put a policy in place that said that, that commercial development cannot cause an, a traffic intersection, an intersection to go to a worse level. And maybe you could describe a little bit, but there was, there was a, a black line that said, no, absolutely not. That was Measure E of now, however many years ago that was. And that that changed with Plan Santa Barbara to a softer approach, and that's kind of a foundation of what you're talking about here. And I, I believe that my colleagues might, if you could give us a primer, a quick, a quick summary of that. And when you say LOS, I ask that you say level of service, because I think the alphabet soup gets us bewildered a little bit. So that's one question I wanted to run by you. Messed with this stuff as long as I have, and, and forgotten as much as I have.
No, yours is a good suggestion.
So, Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, the, the, the level of service, thank you, instead of LOS, the level of service, in the past 20 years, the, the decision with Measure E was that you couldn't add traffic to an intersection that was operating at essentially 77% of its capacity. You couldn't. And if it was a residential project, then you could do an EIR, and the council could do overriding considerations. So we always used to tell the planning commission, kind of jokingly, you know, they would say, you know, wow, there's, there's so much development, this was back in the late 90s, and we say, well, you wouldn't believe how many times we say no. You don't see the times we say no, and it's frequent, you know? The developers know the game, that if you, if you're going to add traffic to an impacted intersection, you don't pick up your pencil. So call Rob first, and now Steve Foley, and get your no or your yes, and then we'll proceed from there. The now, the way it would work is that now we're talking about the project-specific level, so it's not adding traffic to an intersection, it's adding 16 trips to a critical movement at an intersection. And a critical movement, there's only four movements that are critical, so there's many, many movements that aren't. So you can actually add a lot of traffic to an intersection, particularly if it's in the opposite flow of peak travel, and you won't have an issue. And so we've lifted the lid, if you will, we've, we've increased our ability to say yes, 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 particularly with the smaller development, the infill development, that is a part of the plan. Does that help?
A couple of it. And then, okay, go ahead, because I really, I want, it's important that we get everybody on board on this.
So if I remember your summation from before correctly, we said that this is actually less restrictive than our previous practice. So I'm a little puzzled why we have these objections that people somehow think it's more restrictive. Might you address that?
Madam Mayor.
Have public comment that might, they might address it themselves, too.
Fine.
And then, by May of the second, sort of question area.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to wait on this?
No, if you have questions, go right ahead.
And another area that I remember being talked about is that we have a rising tide of traffic here, particularly on Highway 101, that creates low levels of service, particularly at the intersections of the, of the streets and the highway. And so this could do, you don't even get to come at bat anymore because the intersection's already not acceptable. Whereas what we are now have with Plan Santa Barbara is, even though those intersections either are at an unacceptable level, or are headed there in a decade or some very foreseeable period of time, Plan Santa Barbara now allows those intersections to take more traffic, to allow, allows development at those intersections. Is that, can you describe a little, maybe elucidate on that a little bit, what that, elaborate is the word, not elucidate, on that a little bit, of how that thinking is going?
That, you said it very well. I, I'm not sure how much to elaborate it. Maybe it would help, be helpful to answer Councilmember Hotchkiss's question about why would somebody be here? These people are, in our minds, the rock stars of land development, and these are our colleagues. We work with them all the time on land development. So why would they be here protesting this? Well, I think what you hear in the, in the public comment is that the way the threshold is being updated, it applies now to all 26 intersections in our 2030 horizon, but those intersections may not be impacted today. Remember, I don't know if you recall the numbers, but only 13 are impacted today. But this threshold will apply 26 of those intersections to this. And I think that that is the fear. The fear is that, well, that's going to be more restrictive because I wouldn't, I wouldn't have that problem in, I wouldn't have a problem if I did the existing analysis now, whereas the way you're, you're updating the threshold, now I will. And our response to that is, yeah, that's true, but it used to be, you'd be dead in the water anyway. Now you, you're lifting up, and we want to make sure that, if you, if you did it the way with the, not only would it be more expensive if you did it the way your existing threshold reads, but here's what would happen. If you get your development in first, you'll be okay. If you, if you're first in under that, that .77, then you're good. And what we want to do is, and, and the traffic management strategy is instructive of, is let's look at development as it comes, let's make sure it's the one we want, and if it is raising its head over a disproportionate share of that traffic, let's see if that project is worthy. You can still, this council still can approve projects that are community benefit, they come to the level of project-specific impact, that is not an issue. Hopefully, that's helpful.
Mr. House.
Just to be really brief, and excuse my voice, please. Mr. Dayton, we talked on the phone today, and you indicated that there was kind of a reason why you didn't reach out to the working group for this hearing in advance and have a chance to get together with them. And perhaps you'd share that with me and with the public? And then, maybe that's enough for right now. What was your thinking, please?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, we felt like we did a very extensive outreach to the, to the stakeholders group, and, and it's our recollection that this issue came up multiple times, that this is the way we are going to analyze traffic over the future baseline, which is 2030. So, so even, even this issue, we feel like we've had a rich discussion about it, we totally get that there's a disagreement, and, and we also don't want to be presumptuous. If there's something that we can explain and, and talk about the intricacies of how this works, you know, we're open to that. I think the, the other thing is, and I don't think Scott Schell, who works for ATE, believes, you know, is concerned about this, but this is going to put traffic engineers for our city kind of out of business from the land development standpoint, because it makes it so inexpensive, and they'll, they'll use the process you've already paid for, and, and that might be, that might be another concern. But that's, you know, that's, we're, we're open to meeting with them, too, but that's why we didn't. We thought we had this, this discussion already.
Okay, well, I appreciate you saying you're open to meeting with them. And Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm kind of interested in really keeping that partnership alive. We've, and I won't go into comments right now, but I would be interested to see what it would look like if we gave a chance to have that conversation and have it come back to council.
Okay, so just one question, then we'll go to public comment. What's the difference between what we have in front of us here today and the last time this was to council?
Madam Mayor, the difference is now we're talking about specific threshold language.
Okay.
Okay, so before, you had a strategy, this implements the strategy, and I also want to say that your traffic management strategy did not deal with residential. That wasn't on the table. But just so you're aware, this threshold guides residential as well. So that would be another change.
Okay, but nothing new in terms of what we, this isn't new conversation, this is just implementing the language of policies that we've had for a long time, including the last meeting.
That's our perception.
Okay. Okay, with that, I'm going to open it to public comment. I have two speaker slips, Lisa Plowman and Kathy McCammon.
Good afternoon, I'm Kathy McCammon. Members of the council, I think I'm representing the stakeholders that we met with Rob and his staff on the growth management plan, and I've spoken to about three-quarters of them, and each one of us was caught a little bit flat-footed by the staff report. I knew that something was coming out, because Rob and I had discussed mailing lists and whatnot, but when I read it last night, it became clear to me that I didn't have an understanding of what this was. And I didn't understand that this is what they were going to be bringing from the last round of discussions with them, when the growth management plan was adopted. So everybody kind of collectively agreed, well, let's see if we can take a little extra time to better understand what this new threshold will be. I mean, for example, I think you've got intersections, 26 intersections that are listed, as, as Rob said, many of them are C, some of them are worse, but some are B. And so all of a sudden, now you have a threshold change for project-specific impacts, where it was, you only had a project-specific impact when your level of service was C or worse. Now, your intersection could be operating at an acceptable level, and you still have a project-specific impact. Well, that's a change in how the threshold operates. That's a change in how you conduct your Sequoia analysis, and I don't feel like I've had sufficient time to assess what that really means in the long term. So that's just one example. I mean, I don't want to spend time trying to pick apart what the whole staff report says, but we're just asking for a workshop so that we could better understand the ramifications of it. Who knows? We may come back hand-in-hand and say, hey, yeah, we support it. We may come back with, we support some of this, and we don't support this aspect of it, but I think a broader public input process would be beneficial for everybody. Maybe it's a workshop with the stakeholders, maybe then a visit to the planning commission if, if the council thinks that's necessary, but that's all we're asking for at this point in time. Some additional time.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse has a question for you, Ms. Plowman.
Ms. Plowman, so do you feel, having seen the, the council meeting before we discussed this, do you think there are inconsistencies with what's being presented today and what we discussed last time? Or, last time was more general, this is more specific, I get that part.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse. I honestly did not expect this. I heard statements where we don't want a single project to take up too much capacity in intersection. I did hear that. But this is an implementation of that idea, and this is not what I expected. I, I don't remember discussing this, I don't have any comments about it in any of my notes or, or in the letter that we wrote. So it may have been in their minds, staff's minds, that they thought they were explaining that, but it did not come across that way to the rest of the stakeholders.
And do you have, I did speak with some of the stakeholders today and got, got some idea of what you guys were talking about, but do you feel that the idea of making this easier or more streamlined for development is correct, or you think that is not exactly what we're doing here, or?
I think it depends on who you are, actually. It depends on where your project's located. For some people, I mean, overall, I think we supported the main elements of the growth management plan.
Right.
We had some sticking points about what was happening up in Zone 3 and Zone 4, and I have a general objection to some, the way this, some aspect of the Sequoia analysis and the inability to override for commercial projects. But other than that, I think we were pretty supportive of it.
Well, clearly, council was also supportive of the statement of making this more streamlined and more user-friendly, so.
Yeah, sure, sure.
I think we're probably, I could speak for my colleagues, I think we're all still interested in going there. So I, that's why I'm kind of curious about the, the differences and take on this particular report.
No, I mean, I think that's great, if we can streamline the process. There isn't a person out there, I don't think, that would support that. And even Scott Schell, I mean, I know Mr. Dayton suggested there might be a concern there, but I think everybody's supportive of, of making sure that projects can get through the process in a predictable and simple way where it's possible.
Okay.
But I think we just have questions about this threshold in particular.
Thank you.
Kathy McCammon.
Good afternoon, I'm Kathy McCammon.
Want to bring the mic down to you, Kathy?
Okay. I'm here, I'm Kathy McCammon, and I'm representing Allied Neighborhoods Association. We two have questions. Traffic at the 26 intersections will ultimately affect many of our neighborhoods. Allied questions, why you are doing this now, and why not wait until the adaptive management results are made public? Just how will traffic effects be reduced to the extent feasible by this change, as it says in the staff report? And I guess what we're basically saying is we want assurances that there's adequate collective traffic data on which to base such a change. This is the first time we've seen this like this, and we think it warrants further discussion, and that it should be based on specific data. And we don't see that. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comments to the council. Ms. Maria.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A question to Mr. Dayton, would there be harm done, or what would be the impact if we waited and had a workshop to satisfy the stakeholders and the neighborhood watchdog folks?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Maria, I don't, I don't think we're any loss. I think you don't have a time rush. We are, you approved this traffic management strategy, so we've been implementing this strategy since you approved it in March. Ms. Plowman's projects have sailed through based on that policy. So it's, it's, it's not, it's not like going away from this meeting and talking about the, the nuances of the, how we're doing it, and how, how is this going to work is not a, it's, it's a good thing. I think it'd be fine.
Okay. I, it's just the implement, part of implementing the general plan, it seems like we should be careful with that, and more public input is better than less. So when it comes to the time, I would, I would suggest that we do put off making a decision and allow for more public participation.
What kind of timeline would you be looking at if there's a, I mean, Ms. Maria said two things, which I think are two different things, which was, what's, what's the process? Is there any harm, or what's the impact of having a workshop? That's one thing, and then when we can have the stakeholders and the neighborhoods all agree on it, which is a whole nother thing. You know, that may not happen after, just because there's a workshop. And I think, I guess my question is, I'm, I'm cognizant of trying, trying to speak for Mr. House, since his voice is, needs some help. since his voice needs some help, but I appreciate, no one likes to feel like they're surprised at something that seems significant to them that's being voted on, so have a conversation about it. But that doesn't necessarily mean we're going to change the policy. It's just more about a conversation piece, which is fine. And maybe if there's some clarifying language or understanding, that's great. I just don't know if that, if there's some expectation that we're going to redo something that we've already decided. So if we were to go back and say, do some workshop and have some clarifications with the stakeholders or neighborhood groups, what would be your suggested process in moving forward?
Well, I think we're going to have the workshop either way. I think that this is a new system, and we have practitioners that need to know the system. You know, like the comment I had with, the conversation I have with Derek Rapp at Penfield Smith, you know, he's going to have to use the system. He says, I'm not concerned about it. Just tell me how it works, so I can do it. And so that is on us. We need to tell people how it works. So if you approve it today, we're going to do that. If you don't approve it today, we're going to do that. We can explain it and have the same conversation, maybe for different reasons. I don't think you're going to get agreement. I think the concerns from Allied have always been, traffic impacts are bad, don't have them. They'll want you to go less than you already have. And the comments from this group is, you're not going far enough for development. And what we have is, we've landed in the middle. So I expect that the disagreements will still persist, but we can teach people what we're talking about, which is incumbent upon us to do anyway.
Okay. And just also to clarify, when you say, when a project goes to staff for a yes or no, and the answer is yes, just to be clear, that's not yes, you have a permit, it's yes, you can move forward with the permitting and the process to the next step.
To the next step. That's right.
Which everything else, in terms of whether something actually gets approved, is still in question and part of the process.
Is another story.
That's a whole other story, just to be clear. And I'll just make the comment, I know, Ms. Plowman, you mentioned the level of service B that might now be looked at. You know, I look at this, this is Plan Santa Barbara looking at the long-term impacts of the community. And actually, even though something might be a level of service B today, why wait until it gets to become a D before we do anything about it, as opposed to reviewing the process earlier and seeing, and deciding, it doesn't matter, or maybe it doesn't matter. But at least to have that analysis, to me, seems to be good information in terms of citywide traffic management. So I personally don't see a problem with elevating that discussion at that level, where maybe today, that may not have happened to this point. Maybe that's why we have a potential 26 intersections that are going to be impacted. And maybe if we'd done things differently before, it wouldn't have been the same way. I don't know. But it seems, that seems to make sense to me on an intuitive level. So I just thought I'd put that out there. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, what I see as a good way to go is a workshop pre-decision, measure twice before cutting. And also, and I appreciate that staff has made an effort to balance the two areas of concern. And this has been going on since the visioning. I mean, just you go back 10 years, and growth, no growth, traffic, et cetera. These are sort of the big questions that Santa Barbara faces in trying to manage our quality of life. So it's a big deal. And the staff has given it a good shot at compromise and at a reasonable way forward. And the private sector folks, I'm hearing, well, both sides are expressing concern, both the, more traffic is bad and we need more good development, folks are both saying, are feeling a little blindsided here. That's not how we have proceeded with, I mean, Plan Santa Barbara has been a grueling grind, and we're close. There isn't a time pressure on this. This has to be done tomorrow. So I think, and it may be out of this, that nuances and bits and pieces of where that middle is, or where that sweet spot is, could move. And it would be okay, and always at the end of the day, always at the end of these processes, if people feel like they've been heard and participated, it's, I think it's a stronger body of support going forward. So I definitely support the stakeholder aspect of things, including the Kathy McCammons of the world in that stakeholding. I don't know what that group was comprised of before today. I just think it's another step in our community conversation about Plan Santa Barbara, and that's, I think that something good will come out of it. I hear, too, just us up here getting a little more education. Of course, with Mr. Hart coming onboard, he won't be exactly behind the curve on any of this transportation stuff. So, you know, that will be, that will be a good thing. So I would, I would support a stakeholder workshop, and I would be willing to make a motion to that effect, Madam Mayor.
Right ahead.
All right, I would so move. And then staff would arrange that, and obviously outreach to the stakeholders.
You want to put a time period on that? Staff, what would be a?
What would be a recommendation?
Come back by?
Would have to be probably January, early February.
When's it come back by, sometime in February? Is that okay with the motion?
That sounds good.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay.
I have a request, though.
Go right ahead.
Could you let us know when that workshop's going to be? I'd like to come.
Absolutely.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with the motion. I think that having spoken to, and knowing the stakeholders as I do, they really are, as Mr. Dayton said, kind of the rock stars, and they do have the practical boots-on-the-ground experience that should be a valuable part of this whole input process. You know, Plan Santa Barbara got approved by this council unanimously, partly because it provided flexibility, provided a standard of reasonableness, and the ability to hold on to some of the tools without implementing what may or may not become draconian tools. And I think that something like this particular concept is arcane enough, that expertise outside of what most of us, other than maybe Mr. White and Mr. House have in planning, is a good idea. And I would like to, you know, rather than rush into this, have that kind of input as part of our thing. You know, going to the growth models in 101, I mean, really, if you look at our town, what's grown in Santa Barbara is Santa Barbara City College and UCSB, neither which, neither of which we have any control over. No TDM, no nothing, and yet that's where a lot, so a lot of this planning, we can render our clothes and tear our hair out over, but obviously, there's a lot of things that we can't impact through this planning process. So I would like to see it be as user-friendly and as reasonable as possible. And I definitely would like the private sector stakeholders to be a part of that. So I will be supporting that motion. Thank you.
Mr. House.
I appreciate these comments. I do want to say, this is not open season on the policy. The fundamental policy was established. We're talking about the nuances of the implementation. And I do support the motion.
Okay, so with that, we know what the motion is. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. That was not a note opposing, it was, there's no one opposing. Okay, it was 7-0. Thank you very much. Item number 10.
Las Positas Road at Cliff Drive Intersection Improvements Project Update.
Okay, Mr. Bailey.
Madam Mayor and Council, just introduce Derek as our city traffic engineer. There's a significant amount of history of this project. I've been here since the beginning, but Derek can pull it forward, and I'll hand it over to Derek at this time.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, we last came before you on June 25 to discuss this item. At that meeting, you gave us direction to proceed with the final design of a new traffic signal at Las Positas Road and Cliff Drive, and to conduct additional research into the cost of the roundabout. And should that cost estimate be reduced significantly, return to council to present that information. That's why we're here today. Before I get into what changed as far as the updated cost estimate, I'm just going to give a little bit of background again about the project. The project purpose is to improve traffic operations and reduce congestion at the intersection of Las Positas Road and Cliff Drive. Now, how we accomplish that, there's different alternatives, traffic signal, roundabout. Funding-wise, the city secured a grant of $750,000. That's for construction only. Any design or environmental would be the responsibility of the city. That funding is programmed in fiscal year 2015, 16. And as well, the city has budgeted $60,000, which we were planning on using for design and environmental. So there's a total of $810,000 available for this project right now. At the June meeting, as we discussed, the previous design of the roundabout was estimated to cost $1.9 million, leaving a funding shortfall of $1.1 million. That would be the responsibility of the city. By comparison, the traffic signal was estimated to cost $850,000, $100,000 of which would be city-funded. The $750,000 construction grant would be used to build the traffic signal. An important difference to highlight between these two costs is that the previous design, the roundabout, cost was just for the intersection improvements. For the traffic signal, just the intersection improvements would cost about $400,000. That would include a traffic signal, all the pedestrian amenities at that intersection, meaning there'd be about $350,000 left over that could be used for other stuff, enhance pedestrian connections, enhance landscaping, et cetera. So within that traffic signal estimate, the signal itself doesn't take up the whole construction cost. There would be money left over to use for other improvements immediately at that intersection. This slide illustrates the previously presented design concept that was estimated to cost $1.9 million. Included in this roundabout design was a 150-foot circulating roundabout, so the dimension across the roundabout, from edge to edge, 150 feet. That's large enough to comfortably accommodate the large delivery trucks that we know use that intersection. As well, that cost estimate also included bicycle and pedestrian treatments, resurfaced roadway within the project limits, lighting, longer medians on the approaches. As you can see, there's, we call these splitter islands approaching the roundabout. And as well, landscaping and aesthetic treatments was accounted for in that previous cost estimate.
We have a question, Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bailey, do you happen to know, you just described the diameter of that roundabout as being 150 feet. Do you happen to know what the diameter is of the roundabout at Hot Springs?
Yes. It varies between 120 and 150 feet. I can, actually got an aerial way back in the, there it is. The Hot Springs roundabout, it's what we call a multi-lane roundabout. This short side of the roundabout, oops, sorry, 120 feet, and the long side, that's about 150 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
So comparable.
Okay.
When we, with the purpose of the project being to relieve congestion at the intersection, we compare the alternatives that are available to us. Obviously, both a traffic signal and a roundabout would relieve congestion immediately. But whatever we build, we want to account for traffic in the future. So we look to what we call our horizon year, year 2035, to evaluate traffic conditions as well. With no project, if the project, if the intersection just remains with always stop control, traffic delay is going to continue to get worse and worse, and delay will be quite significant by that time. If a traffic signal is selected as the traffic control at the intersection, we can expect a level of service C, with about 19.2 seconds delay for the average driver at the intersection as well. The roundabout would be a little bit better, level of service B with about 12.9 seconds, and that's for the average driver. When we talk about what we're designing for, we usually focus on the PM peak hour, and that's very important. That's how we set our city thresholds. But what's going on the other 23 hours a day is important as well. And this table illustrates the difference between performance of the roundabout and traffic signal during different times of the day. So AM peak with the traffic signal, a B, 15 seconds delay. Roundabout, a little bit better. Mid-morning, still a B, quite good. Roundabout, a little bit better. And again, in the evening, traffic signal level of service B, with 13.5 seconds delay. Again, roundabout, just a little bit better. These are all averages. This is what?
But, Ms. Maria, go ahead.
Mr. Bailey, so the, going from B to A, improving, is it all just simply based on the number of seconds that people have to wait? Are there other standards?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Maria, when we talk about levels of service, the thresholds are based on delay. So in this case, for a traffic signal, when the average driver waits 9.6 seconds, that's considered an A. That's considered good. When we cross over 10 seconds, it becomes a B. So that's, so the thresholds are established based on seconds of delay.
Okay. I mean, just looking at the numbers, it doesn't seem like that much torturous to sit there for two more seconds, but...
Right. And these are very close, and they're all quite good. We have intersections in the city that are worse than this. So in the big picture, these are quite good. But if we move on to the next slide.
Okay, thank you.
There's nuances within that that I think are really important to understand. When we time a traffic signal, the green time that we give to each of the different movements is allocated proportionally to how much traffic there is. So if there's one movement that's really heavy, we proportionally give more green time to that movement. At this intersection, we know that the two heaviest movements are the southbound left turn, so you're coming southbound on Las Positas, turn left to go up the hill, and as well, the westbound right turn, so coming down the hill from Cliff Drive and turning right to go into Las Positas. Those are by far and away the two heaviest movements. With the traffic signal, we can have those two movements running at the same time. And because that traffic volumes are so much larger than the other movements out there, that's where the majority of the green time's going to be. Those other movements, they're going to be sitting at a red light. And it's really important to understand, the numbers that we presented before, they're averages. So in this case, the, probably the most extreme one to look at would be this westbound-through movement for a traffic signal. They could experience up to 50.3 seconds of delay, average, during the PM peak hour. That's worse than it is today. So these minor movements, particularly the eastbound movements and that westbound-through movement, they're going to get worse with the traffic signal alternative. Overall, the intersection's going to operate better as a traffic signal, particularly that southbound-left turn movement that gets queued up so bad. Traffic signal will address that. Those queues will go away. But just so we understand, that if a traffic signal is selected, what's going to happen to those people in minor movements during the peak hour? They are going to experience some more delay.
If I might ask a question here. When you have green arrows for coming down Cliff, turning right, and coming down Las Positas, turning left, those are simultaneous, those two green arrows. And also, a green arrow is coming down Las Positas, turning right, correct? So three of the five, and we can put it there, three of the six are going pretty fast and quickly there.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, yes, there will be green arrows for those movements.
Right.
The only qualification to that is if there's ever a pedestrian walking across this west leg.
Right.
There will not be a green arrow for that right turn movement. That arrow would have to turn off.
Right. I don't know how much pedestrian traffic, well, sometimes in the beach area, there's some. Okay, so we're saying that we'll do as much as 50 seconds going west on Cliff, the delay. What kind of volume do we have at peak hour for that? Do you have any idea?
Currently, there's 131 vehicles an hour making that westbound-through movement. And by 2035, we expect that to be about in the 155 vehicles per hour range.
And what's the volume of people coming down Las Positas, southbound, I guess that is?
Currently is 528.
Five times then.
2035, that could go up to about 625.
Okay, thank you.
So that describes the difference in performance delay-wise. Roundabout will be pretty consistent for all legs. With the traffic signal, some people are going to arrive on a red light and wait. Safety-wise, roundabout is a superior alternative, particularly single-lane roundabouts, like is being proposed here. That means there's one lane circulating in the roadway, and as well, each of the approaches is just one lane. That changes if it's a multi-lane roundabout. The advantage for roundabouts starts to... The advantage for roundabouts starts to decrease compared to traffic signals. But when you compare a single-lane roundabout to a traffic signal, we would expect 21% fewer crashes, and as well, 66% fewer injury crashes. This intersection is of particular concern because it is at the end of a high-speed roadway, Las Pecitas Road, the speed limit's 55 miles an hour. A roundabout is a really good way to end a high-speed roadway. And actually, in Europe, they use roundabouts to end freeways. So, that's an interesting fact. In terms of pedestrian safety and bike safety, there hasn't been any real comprehensive national studies done comparing roundabouts to traffic signals. The Federal Highway Administration always references a study that was done in Great Britain, which obviously has very different intersections than we do, but pedestrians and bikes tend to have fewer crashes at roundabouts, and as well, they tend to be less severe because the moving speed through a roundabout is slower than a traffic signal. One disadvantage of a roundabout compared to a traffic signal, safety-wise, is for blind people. Blind people tend to have a really hard time navigating their way through a roundabout. They use audio cues to analyze traffic that's moving around them and deciding when a safe time to cross the road is. Because of the traffic patterns in a roundabout, it's really hard for them to queue into when there's going to be a gap that's safe for them to cross. So, that is a disadvantage for roundabouts. Moving on to our updated cost estimate, like I mentioned previously, the cost estimate presented to you was about 1.9 million dollars. We've got that down to about 1.4 million dollars, but it still means there's a funding shortfall of about 600,000 dollars. Part of our response to council's direction included talking to the city of Galita on their recent experience building a roundabout on Los Canaros Road, and as well, through Councilmember House, we got some information from some local designers, architects, and contractors. There was one design in particular that we were able to get some good information from. So, what did we do to get the cost estimate down? Well, previously, we presented a design concept with 150-foot diameter, updated. The smallest we think we can go at this intersection is 120 feet. So, that's a reduction of 30 feet. That reduces the overall footprint of the intersection, so there's some cost savings there. We removed $100,000 landscaping and aesthetics allowance, and we do have concerns with this, potentially getting this through the design review process with no cost allowances for landscaping or aesthetics. This project will require a permit from the Coastal Commission and is acted upon by the Planning Commission, or we'll recall a coastal development permit, pardon me, and will be acted upon by the Planning Commission, but it is appealable to the Coastal Commission. The local coastal plan calls for quality aesthetic materials, although there is no specific design standard set. So, if council does direct staff to move forward with a roundabout, we do recommend direction to the ABR to work with staff to develop a minimal and cost-effective landscaping and aesthetics plan, and incorporating that plan into a final cost estimate. And if that's the case, the shortfall would be a little bit higher than 600,000 dollars, depending on how extensive the landscaping and aesthetics plan is.
Would any project, including a traffic signal, be needing a coastal development permit?
At this location, yes.
So, even a traffic signal is appealable to the Coastal Commission?
I believe so. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other areas of savings, we removed 82,000 dollars in pavement reconstruction. One thing to consider when we, when looking at a roundabout is the maintenance of a roundabout. Working on the roadway within a roundabout is very difficult, just due to the nature of the way traffic moves through a roundabout. And when we do have to get into a roundabout to do work, the impact to the traveling public is great. So, the more we can do now to build a facility that requires less maintenance, that's less impact to the public. We also reduced the size of the approach medians on Cliff Drive, 30,000 dollar savings.
Excuse me if I might add, ask, couldn't you do maintenance at from midnight to 3:00 in the morning or 4:00 in the morning when you have minimal traffic?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, generally, yes. We consider what the adjacent land uses are and how much noise we're going to be making, but this seems to be a location that would lend itself to overnight work.
You do have some residences not far away, but-
We do. So, if it was going to be quite loud, we would have to develop an alternative plan, maybe Sunday mornings type thing. But, yeah, we would definitely do what we could to minimize that impact.
Thank you.
This is a design concept, just to illustrate the size of the roundabout. Some of the design details that would need to be incorporated into final design aren't illustrated here, like pedestrian treatments. This is what 120-foot diameter roundabout would look like. The exact location of the roundabout could slide closer to the hillside to the east or a little bit further south, but just footprint-wise, that's what 120-foot roundabout looks like. One important safety feature that we did not remove from the roundabout is the length of the median on the north leg coming down Las Pecitas Road. That median creates a gentle reverse curve, and that encourages drivers to slow down as they're approaching the roundabout. Now, that's a very important safety feature, an advantage that a roundabout has over a traffic signal, is reducing that slowing. This drawing also illustrates a large delivery truck, the wheel path moving through the roundabout, making that southbound to eastbound movement. This is just zoomed in on that same drawing we showed before. These lines are the wheel path. This shows the semi-unit moving through the circular roadway. These lines here show what the wheel path of that trailer is going to do, of a really long semi-trailer. So, as the trailer, even though it's moving through the roadway going around, its trailer actually drags across the center island. So, consequently, this island is only going to be about 40 feet. This is our Hot Springs roundabout at the end of Coast Village Road. Like we talked about before, this roundabout is about 120 to 150 feet, depending on where you measure it across. This center island is 70 feet across, so 40 feet versus 70 feet. There's going to be a smaller area available in the middle. That's because we know there are smaller trucks that use this roundabout. Therefore, this roundabout was designed differently. But in the case of Cliff and Las Pecitas, we know there are larger trucks that use that intersection that would have to be accommodated.
If I might ask, could we go back to the last slide? All right, so you're taking all that traffic from both Las Pecitas and Cliff and basically asking it to conform to one lane. There must be a maximum volume that can go from, or that can go through a one-lane roundabout. What is that, and are we approaching it here?
It's generally in the low 20,000s range-
Of the year, of the day?
For total, yeah, daily, for all approaches. And right now, we're at about 17,000. We don't expect really strong growth in this area. Even into 2035, we're probably going to be in the 18,000 to 19,000 range. So, there is a good cushion that will accommodate traffic into the future.
Okay. I just am sort of seeing things getting backed up as you, I mean, people are going to be slowing down coming down Cliff. Can you project how far back they're going to be starting to slow as they approach, let's say, at peak hour in the evening?
We can predict how long the queues will be-
Yeah.
-but not where people start braking. That's a little bit more difficult.
Okay. What would the queue be, do you think, coming down Las Pecitas, for instance?
Maximum queue would probably be about four to six vehicles trying to enter the roundabout.
You keep trying, Mr. Hotchkiss. You keep trying to bring up things, which is good.
Well, I'm just trying to imagine this, you know, because I've done this and go like, oh, golly, gotta prove this, this is-
It's hard to imagine right now, just because at times you see so much traffic out there, but what's causing that traffic to build is the limitation of capacity of the all-way stop. It reaches a point where it's saturated, and anybody else that arrives, it's just one more person in the queue. With a roundabout, that queue never gets a real chance to develop, so it's hard to imagine that queue being that much less. But even with a traffic signal, for that southbound movement, the light's going to have to turn red at some point to let the east and westbound traffic go. That queue could queue up to 10 to 15 vehicles during that red light, more than the roundabout, but it will get flushed through.
So, you're confident we're nowhere near saturation, even with a one-lane roundabout?
Yeah, I'm confident.
Thank you.
Mr. House?
Mr. Bailey, would you describe the mountable truck apron a little bit more? What would that look like? Because there's a center part that you wouldn't ride over, but there's this outer area, what does that look like?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, you're talking about the center truck apron?
The mountable part, the part where the rear wheels go over.
Where the green lines are, basically.
Yeah. I'll illustrate with two pictures here. This small area outside the wall at the Hot Springs roundabout, that's the truck apron. At this particular location, it was designed with some stone inside of it. But what a truck apron is, is it's usually a raised area, so it's not real attractive for passenger vehicles to get up on, but it, but it does have a curb that's mountable, so if a large truck does go through there, their trailers can quite easily hop up over top of that. Just give me a moment, and I'll flip to another picture. This is the Los Canaros roundabout that Galita just built. Its truck apron is a little bit larger, and they use some decorative concrete treatments around that roundabout. So, that's what it looks like. It's a slightly raised area that's not attractive for passenger vehicles, but usable riding surface for large trucks.
Okay. I know in Santa Maria, they put actual curbs there, which is like not mountable, and this would have that rolled edge or something.
Yeah. It would be a rolled edge or a 45. Yeah, the vertical curbs really discourage the use of, as a truck, truck apron. So, another thing to point out in this picture is the aesthetics treatment at the Hot Springs roundabout. Some very nice landscaping, as well as some of the stone treatment that was used on the center island. These are all examples of landscaping and aesthetics for which the allowance was removed. So, we're, in our allowance with 1.4 million dollars, we're basically talking about dirt and just standard concrete finishes, nothing decorative like we're showing here. It's also worth pointing out that at this roundabout, at Hot Springs, the city spends about 10,000 dollars a year on maintenance of the landscaping. So, even if we do move forward with the roundabout and there is a reduced landscaping at Cliff and Las Pecitas, that could help the city's maintenance burden too, if it's a simplified landscape design. Like we talked about earlier, the traffic signal alternative of the 750,000 dollar construction grant available to us wouldn't cost that entire 750,000 dollars. There'd be about 300,000, 350,000 dollars left over for other features. So, this is just an example of what 350,000 dollars could buy us if we were to move forward with the traffic signal. 350,000 dollars could build a 1,750-foot-long multipurpose pathway, for example. Just to reiterate, the previous cost estimate that we presented to council is 1.9 million dollars. The updated cost estimate that we're presenting today, that does not include landscaping or aesthetics, is about 1.4 million dollars for a funding shortfall of just over 600,000 In conclusion, the roundabout will provide better traffic performance and safety. Quite confident of that. However, the traffic signal construction is fully fundable within the grant amount and does meet the goal of reducing congestion. So, staff is seeking direction from city council on how to proceed, and if council directs staff to move towards a roundabout, recommend that staff work with the ABR to revise the cost estimate for design and landscaping.
We've quite a few public comment speakers, so if you have questions, that's fine, and we'll get those. Mr. Rouse?
Yeah, Mr. Bailey, when, in your traffic engineering work, and as you look at the two options signalized around about, do you, in your calculations, take idling time for automobiles into consideration, just thinking about it from a, you know, pollution standard and those kind of things? And somehow, does that weigh into, I mean, so it could weigh into our decision, but from your, in your universe, do you discuss those things and talk about that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, thank you for bringing that up. We typically don't look at emissions specifically, but emissions are directly tied to idling time and delay. So, the more delay there is, the more emissions. Vehicles that are delayed, they're sitting in a queue, they're not moving through the intersection, but they're still using fuel. So, when we, when we talk about delays going from 15 seconds down to 10 seconds, proportional, we are talking about that type of reduction in emissions as well.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Recent experience has shown that we've expected bids and gone out and come in underbid on certain projects. Is that, might, might that be possible here also, when they're looking at the 600,000 dollar shortfall?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, it's possible. We do base our cost estimates on recent quotations that we've received. So, when we're looking at building things like curb and gutter, streetlights, that sort of thing, it's all based on recent cost estimates. So, this is a, this is our best estimate based on current market conditions.
Thank you.
Mr. House?
Yes, two questions. One, it seems to me that this is an intersection in the middle of a, kind of a whole system. And where I'm coming from is, we've had two fatalities in the area, and one of them was up near Flora Vista and Mesa Lane, and another went out on Las Pecitas. And I understand that our city is considering applying for two safety improvement grants, one as much as 1.5 million dollars, another for about a million dollars, and that speed is a common denominator in this stretch, and that there will be improvements that may very well work excellently with the roundabout option and not so well, or possibly even be conflicting with the, with, from a safety perspective, might be available with a signal intersection. So, my first question is, or request is, could you expand on that just a little bit, about looking at this as part of the whole system, a whole system, and what timeframe that might fit into? And the second one has to do with the STIP funding of 750,000, and what are the limitations in terms of our ability to use it, or defer the use of it and not lose any of it?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, I do have a few extra slides put together in case this came up. Yes, there have been two fairly recent fatalities in this area. One was a jogger on Las Pecitas Road on the shoulder, and the other was a cyclist happened earlier this year on Cliff Drive near Mesa Lane-Floresta intersection. When there are severe crashes like that that result in fatalities or severe injuries, the city has opportunities to apply for safety grants, and the more severe the collision history, the better our proposed projects tend to score. So, with that, we think we would be successful in obtaining 1.5 million dollars for a bike path, a separated bike path, an off-street bike path along the Las Pecitas Road corridor. And as well, we also think we would be successful in getting a million-dollar safety grant for some type of bike lane facility or bike path facility on Cliff Drive. So, what we're looking at right now with, with that is, we're doing some preliminary engineering. We hope to be in a position by next July, when we expect the next call for projects to be, to be in a position to apply for one of these projects or both of these projects. But before we get to the grant application time, we have to have a good idea of what we're applying for. With the Las Pecitas pathway, it's a constrained corridor. There's hillsides on the east, there's the creek on the west, and we don't end up with a whole lot of room in the middle where we could put a pathway. So, we're doing some preliminary engineering right now to look at the feasibility of that, and as well with the bike lanes or bike path on Cliff Drive. In the Bicycle Master Plan, there is a Class 1 bike facility identified along the south side of the road at Cliff Drive. Those would all come together at that intersection. That's, that's how they all meet. I'm quite confident that the roundabout would accommodate any design, no matter what we, which side of the road we would come up with for a Las Pecitas pathway, whether Ealing's Park side, Creek side, and as well for the Cliff Drive, if it were bike lanes or- Park side, Creek side, as well for the Cliff, Cliff Drive, if it were bike lanes or a bike path along the south side. That would all mesh well with the roundabout. The traffic signal alternative, we're not so sure yet. And if council does direct us to move forward with the traffic signal, we'd like to hold off on moving into detailed design until next spring, when we have a good idea of what these facilities could potentially look like. Particularly with the signalized option that has dual left turn lanes, it really increases the footprint size of the intersection and might make it challenging to accommodate one or both of these projects at that intersection. So right now, we just don't have enough information to say how that would tie in.
And, Mr. Bailey, what about the funding, the $750,000? I mean, does this close down on us soon after today? Or do we have the ability, if we wanted to coordinate these efforts, extend its availability to us and not lose anything from that funding stream?
I'd like to approach that, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Grant, is that the timing of this project is fiscal year 2015-16. So there is a significant amount of time available, and we wouldn't be asking for any additional time. And I wouldn't recommend asking for any additional time either way, because this grant funding is quite old. It was initially approved in 2002, and these types of projects, as a matter of fact, recently SB-CAG lost some STIP money based on the new California implementation of the Federal Transportation Act. So we need to move forward now and believe we have the time to do it.
Thank you very much. I think I understand you that either proposal would want to somehow tie in with these grants if they possibly could, and because we're talking 2015-16, there's plenty of time to be able to get it right.
That's our prediction, yes.
All right, thank you.
Just to clarify, because I know on SB-CAG, we look at what STIP money is coming in, and this is state gas tax money that comes through SB-CAG for certain projects. And two things to keep in mind, one is this is designated for 2015-16. It was delayed during the state budget crisis in the late 2005, '06-ish, whatever time that was, or maybe '08, '09. So it was delayed at one point, but it's there now. And there's not any, there's no new STIP money for the South Coast for a very long time, because that money's being reallocated to the 101 HOV project. So I think we want to make sure we keep the $750,000 secure and not mess with any movement of that timing. Okay. So why don't we go to public comment? We'll start with Steve Price would be followed, is Steve here? I thought, I think he left. Okay, so Rich Unterman. We'll start, followed by Bill Marks.
Thank you. I'm here in support of this proposal. It just doesn't make any sense to do something that almost every point points to doing a sensible, not doing a sensible one. You're talking about doing, building a traffic light because it's cheap, and not because it's necessary, it's advantageous, excuse me, not because it's advantageous, but because it's cheap. The waits are longer, you say a couple of seconds, but it's 50% short, shorter. The queues are shorter, it's a one-lane road leading into it, one-lane road could go through it, it's not two, it's just one. It's a simple intersection, a T-intersection. It will look pretty over a period of time, even if you don't plant it, because there are vegetations out there that'll grow naturally, and it'll, it'll become something. So I love what's happening. You've discovered that you're doing the wrong thing, and so you're slowing down, you know? You're just taking your time, you're asking the question again. I urge you to keep going in that direction, even if you have to wait. It's better to have that thing as a stop than it is to do the wrong thing, which will be there forever. So my encouragement is, build a roundabout, wait if you need to, postpone landscaping, postpone lighting, postpone whatever you need. Just build a circle and get it going if you need to. And congratulations on this willingness to look at something again.
Bill Marks will be followed by Kathy McCammon.
Madam Mayor, council members, the previous speaker's stolen a lot of my thunder. I wish we knew more about what the pollution levels would be over the 22 years. I had to wait 50 seconds or something like that. That seems to me a significant advantage of a roundabout is reducing pollution. The aesthetics are better. It's a gateway to the Mesa, which deserves our best shot. And we have the cost factors over 22 years. I mean, if we put in a light, we might find, you know, several years down the road, we want to rip that light out and do the job right the first time. So I encourage you to really think seriously about this roundabout. It seems to me the elegant and preferable, and dare I say, Santa Barbara solution to this problem.
Kathy McCammon will be followed by Gio Chapman.
Hi. This time, I'm Kathy McCammon, and I'm representing both Allied Neighborhoods Association and La Mesa Neighborhood Association. We both would support what the previous speakers said. We're really asking you to delay the decision of proceeding with a signal, because we don't think that's a good option for the neighborhood. And as from La Mesa Neighborhood Association, why should we get an inferior option? This is a very significant intersection for our neighborhood, and we have talked about having a roundabout there for years. And your own staff has told you all the good things about a roundabout that would make our quality of life better. We really believe that this project or your decision should be delayed to make sure the problem really is solved. A signal takes a fair chunk of money, and why spend the money on something that may not prove effective in the future? We really think that we should wait and see if we can't get some grants that, or a grant that somehow work in the safety features, because this is an important project in an important intersection, and we think that we deserve better. So thank you.
Gio Chapman will be followed by Dennis Thompson.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. I want to commend Derek on his presentation here today. It was much more comprehensive than what he gave to the Mesa community last Tuesday. Although he still continues to minimize, in some ways, the safety benefits of a modern roundabout. According to the Insurance Institute Highway Safety, the reduction in fatal crashes is 90%. Reduction in injury crashes, 75%. The increase in traffic capacity is 30 to 35. The roundabout has been shown to be superior to a lighted intersection. They're being implemented all across the nation. Along with these vehicular advantages, there are social environmental benefits that have been touched upon, but just lightly. The reduction of fuel use and pollution is substantial when you add up a three-second per-vehicle delay all day long. It adds up. Another positive of the roundabout is that there's no signal repair. If the power goes out, it still functions. We still move forward. Traffic gets to where it wants to go. No one has to go try and repair it in the middle of the night. And one positive for the people that live on Allen Road, it creates a quieter neighborhood. There isn't any of the screech and growl that you get at an intersection. A big plus. And let me add that, that potential bike trail along Los Pacitas is real. The potential is more than just a possibility. I've been working on a-
Wind up, please.
On just such a trail, and I can let Derek know, it's quite feasible on the Creek side.
Thank you. Dennis Thompson will be followed by Leslie Wiscombe.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm Dennis Thompson. I've been a Mesa resident for 27 years, and I use this intersection frequently. I think there's kind of a consensus here that the roundabout is the superior solution. In fact, the, the only advantage of the stoplights is that it's cheaper. It's cheaper. And this city was not built on doing it the cheaper way. If that were the case, we wouldn't have a county courthouse, we wouldn't be sitting in this very handsome building, we wouldn't have State Street, we wouldn't have Cabrillo Boulevard. This is a very significant intersection, and I think it deserves this kind of attention. If you were a private citizen coming before a board, a review board with your project, your home, your office building, and you said, "I can't afford to do it the Santa Barbara way, I got to do it cheaper," what would happen? You'd be denied. So let's follow that same rule. Let's treat this intersection with respect. This is a gateway, not only to the beach, to the Mesa, it's also a gateway to Hope Ranch. I've been calling them all week and trying to shake some money out of that tree. So the community, I think, could be called upon to, to help a little bit with this fundraising, because we want to see it happen the Santa Barbara way. Thank you.
Leslie Wiscombe will be followed by David Van Hooi.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of council. I'm a local Mesa resident, and I recently completed my unsuccessful city council campaign, but I knocked on a lot of Mesa doors, and a lot of people talked about this issue. And I did not meet one neighbor, one person on the Mesa, who wanted the traffic signal. Everyone I spoke with wanted the roundabout. Second, if you analyze the level of service for the evening peak hour average delay, the traffic signal is proposed to go from a Level of Service B to a Level of Service C by 2035. That's less than 25 years from now. And who's not to say it's going to go to a Level of Service D in five or 10 years after that? While the roundabout is predicted to remain a Level of Service B throughout that whole period. Thirdly, there's the proposed annexation and development of the Hillside House property. And if you look at the 2011 draft EIR, they recommend mitigation for the traffic impacts to the Los Pacitas Cliff Drive area by contributing, a monetary contribution to the roundabout. So that's something that I think should be explored if that goes through. And lastly, the roundabout is a really important Western gateway, Dennis mentioned it, to our city, and it's a very busy area. And I don't believe that we should support a traffic signal solution where the level of service is slated to go down and slip over time. So I encourage you to join the-
20 seconds.
Oh, okay. This is not working, by the way.
Oh, 15 seconds.
It is working. So I encourage you to join the Transportation and Circulation Committee, the Mesa Architects, the majority of Mesa residents that I've spoken with, and also other people that use that intersection frequently, and go with the roundabout solution. Thank you.
David Van Hooi will be followed by Dan Seacord, and then the final speaker will be Lee Muldaver.
Madam Mayor and council members, my name is David Van Hooi, and I think we're at a, or maybe even you specifically, are in a rather pivotal point in time here. And just, other people have articulated this in a different way, but should you go forward with the signal solution, yes, there are some improvements to the existing condition, which is, you know, basically unsustainable for very much longer. However, there's not one square inch of that project, that $800,000 project, that matches up with any sort of roundabout scheme. So the reality is, let's say the signal gets installed, 20 years from now, you're going to, somebody's going to decide, well, we should have really done a roundabout. It means basically throwing $800,000 of construction away and then building what you were going to build and what you could build right now. I think you've heard all the, all the accolades for roundabouts. It's, it's the right solution if we have to wait. I think the community has waited all the way up Los Pacitas for 20 years, waiting for that light to change. I think if it had to wait a little while longer for a, for a Santa Barbara, the right solution for the long term and not wasting $800,000 in the long run, I think you should think hard about that, about that possibility. Thank you.
Dan Seacord?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The elections worked out in your favor, and I'm very pleased about that. I think the voters chose well. Normally, I'm for sustainability and fiscal accountability. What I'm here to ask you to do is to forget about the signalization project and get on board with the, the roundabout. The project has been around forever. It's been selected by this council, it's been selected by the Transportation Circulation Committee. It's your opportunity to do something right as opposed to doing something right now. This is not a project that this signalization project needs to just simply evaporate. The city has spent plenty of money, plenty of taxpayer dollars, on bulbouts and curious little traffic calming devices. The money for this one can be found if you guys will commit yourselves to doing it. And the sole beneficiaries of a signalized intersection would be the people going south on Los Pacitas. At one point in time, and the, the signalization burdens everybody else the rest of the day. So the signalization project is, is not a sustainable one, and the world needs to favor doing to it. We need you to do a favor for the world and forget this signalization and get on with the roundabout, which is the right thing. And thank you very much for your time and attention.
Lee Muldaver.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am Lee Muldaver, local resident, and congratulations to the mayor and Councilman White and Councilman Hotchkiss on your reelection. I think that the prior speakers have discussed what the council already knows among themselves, even in the Budget and Finance Committee, that there's a big difference between price, cost, and value. And the short-term price for a signalized intersection appears to be lower, but when you look at the fully allocated costs of congestion, smog, and higher accident rates, as well as different maintenance problems, that cost goes up. And when you're looking at long-term value, the whole equation shifts over to the roundabout. So I also am encouraging you to go with a smaller design of the roundabout. And I would like to thank the council for being open-minded and for pausing to get more information. I'd like to thank Mr. Bailey and his Public Works team for coming back with a newer range of options. I'd like to thank the members of the review committees, some of whom weren't initially enthusiastic about this, with taking a look. I think you have really, really strong community support, and that wasn't the case with previous councils when they had to bite the bullet on Milpas or at Salinas Five Points, where that was a thing of daring, and people predicted it would fail. But this is a winner. It's been proven in the city. The city's been a pioneer with this technology. It's going to have an immediate beneficial impact for the traffic down what Councilman White calls "the lungs" of the city, and for all the residents and our neighbors that Mr. Rouse has up on the Mesa. So I would encourage you to put your money behind the revised, smaller version of the roundabout and try to make that happen at your earliest convenience. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's to the council. Mr. House?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and again, I hope you'll hold up under my voice. I do want to appreciate our staff for having really gone back to the well and looked hard. A half a million dollars less in this proposal by right scaling and focusing on the essentials and listening to design professionals and major contractors' input. What maybe the council doesn't know, Mr. Unterman, who was here earlier, rallied some of our top contractors to take a look at this, and they got together. This is Mark Edwards, Principal of Parton and Edwards Construction, Jim Lash, Principal at Lash Construction, Randy Douglas, the owner of Tierra Construction. And he reached out to Rosemarie Aglioni, who's the Assistant Public Works Director in Galita and the Project Manager for the Los Canaros Roundabout, and also Rachel Price, who's with Reed Middleton, Civil Engineering, Structural Engineering, and Planning and Surveying, one of the largest of these kinds of contractors in the West. And their input was put together in a white paper, and their message was, "Keep it simple, keep it small, simplify the process, and use straightforward construction methods," which are reflected in that half a million dollar savings. The community has asked for a roundabout, and I think that you've heard people mention the unique character of this particular area with Douglas Family Preserve, a Royal Borough Beach, Ealing's Park, all of these things converging in one place. And the fundamental thing we hear over and again from the community is not just about congestion, which- congestion, which is, of course, a big issue, but it has to do with safety. It has to do with functionality 24 hours of the day. It has to do with aesthetics, that this maintains a rural character that's sympathetic with the uses nearby. And they're taking, over and again, when I talk to people, a long-range outlook, looking at the bike and pedestrian uses and the converging demands of these uses right there as they will be expanding in the future. So I really appreciate Dr. Seacord for asking us to evaporate the idea of a traffic signal here. Around the country, I've done some research on this, and since the last council meeting that we discussed this, I've done quite a bit. Jurisdictions all over the nation are taking T intersections like this and converting them to roundabouts because of safety. These are magnets for dead, for fatality collisions when somebody comes at 55 miles an hour into a T-bone situation. And with a traffic signal, unfortunately, people believe the green light, and they'll head across the signal right into the oncoming traffic. We have a gap in funding, so looking at that, I just want to offer for the city council's consideration. First of all, we are applying for two safety grants. Surely, that money can't be used really particularly for the roundabout, but the complementary features that would be left out in a stripped-down roundabout like this could be. And we want to make sure that whatever goes in there would enhance the safety of the system, not compete with it. So the roundabout would be complementary to the safety improvements, which are addressing fatalities that have already happened in the area. In a couple of weeks, council's going to be considering how to apportion some funding that's left over from last year's budget, and these are one-time funds. A portion of this shortfall, if not all of it, but a portion of it, could be coming from that. So I've inquired a little bit to find out whether this would directly compete with, say, east side improvements, as an example. I've heard your concerns, Kathy. It appears that with the long list, there still is enough to be able to address significantly the shortfall here and not directly harm the possibility of the improvements on the east side. I might also say some of those projects could benefit from other sources of funding not available here. Save Roots to Schools grants would be just one example that we could be applying for there as well. And lastly, you've heard it suggested from the public, and we've gotten some in writing, there may very well be private funding that would assist us. A landscaping grant would be a very likely opportunity here. There are possibly private contributions, fundraising, and I'd be glad to be active in that effort if that were possible. And the pedestrian and bike facilities could have separate kinds of funding sources, not to mention other projects that might be going on in the area. We all know they're coming down the pike. So lastly, there's no firm deadline on this $750,000. We don't want to mess with that. I'm really reassured by staff to say that the timeframe, the '15-'16 timeframe, gives us enough time to do this well and to coordinate this in the spring, I think, is when you're going to be looking at these safety grants, to coordinate it so that what we do here can benefit from the synergy between that $2.5 million or something like it that we may get and, of course, addressing the shortfall. So lastly, I'll say, this community has asked for a roundabout and expected it for a long time. The traffic signal option is not what the community wants, and it misses on some primary objectives: safety, functionality, aesthetics, coordination with system-wide improvements and our future needs. And that's it, Madam Mayor. I strongly urge just to hold off a little bit and get this one right.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one question for Mr. Bailey and Mr. Kelly. In all these drawings and iterations of the roundabout, we seem to avoid the corner that used to be the free right turn lane towards the hill. And I was curious, is that, was that a Caltrans issue? Or, I mean, I remember when that used to be a part of the roadway. And it just seems that rather being more intrusive over on the other side or up on the creek side, why that was?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, first to address the free right turn. I wasn't around when Caltrans removed it. But my understanding is that due to the way it was shaped, it was causing collisions, and Caltrans removed it. To get a true free right back in there, we would have to design the roadway such that there's enough room for traffic making that westbound-to-northbound movement to get up to speed and then time to merge in. It takes quite a bit of distance to do that, probably looking in the neighborhood of 1,000 feet at least. That gets us past some of the pinch points that we're really concerned about, such as the hillside on the east and the creek on the west. So doing any sort of road widening to accommodate a free right would be quite challenging and expensive. In terms of where we've plopped this roundabout down, so to speak, it wasn't intentional to avoid this area over here. The purpose of this drawing was really just an order of magnitude so that we could produce some cost estimates. If council directs us to move in this direction, final design could absolutely shift closer into that area or further south if we're trying to avoid the creek habitat on the northwest corner. There's a lot of flexibility.
Okay, very good. And then just in general, I think that, in accordance with the other speakers, even though we did direct staff to move forward with a signalized design last time, in retrospect, I believe that I have to agree with most of the speakers, it is probably time to not do this. It is time to wait and look at this option because it really will be ultimately the best option. And I mean, a one-time, had the lead project gone through, that would have provided us some money. There may be something down the road that we don't even foresee that may help us with this, let alone the one-time capital money that may or may not be used for this. Not looking forward to spending more money, but I do think that, given the evidence and given your presentation, which I thought was excellent, it really points to doing a roundabout. So I don't, I'm going to be very supportive of making this issue either a tabled issue or a direction to look further at this design in a roundabout sense.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I would concur with Mr. Rouse's comments. Basically, the, I appreciate the team effort, and I was not aware of Mr. Unterman's involvement and all the different contractors weighing in on that. My concern is cost, and I appreciate Dr. Dan's comments about, you know, you don't want to just be spending, and also Dennis Thompson's, that you don't want to just be putting in a non-Santa Barbara project. At the same time, we were facing a gap that was, I did not, and I don't understand, this is one of those areas, the SB CAG, the STIPS, that is an area that I do not understand that funding system. And where can we find savings? What's going to come up in the future? As they say, for me, it's still a black box, and I really am dependent on staff and SB CAG to guide me in those areas. I certainly am willing to, you know, go with the roundabout or just hang back option. That's okay. That can work for me. But I hate to lose that $750,000, and I need the guidance of my SB CAG colleagues here on how you try to get to second base without ever leaving first. Show me the magic there, and as well as where do we find that extra? Now we're down to, what, $600,000? Is that the number? You know, we get that down to three, all right? Then we start looking at those, at that one-time money and so forth. I could see dipping into it at that order of magnitude. I just couldn't go with the 900, I mean, the loss to, when we're not even paving our streets properly in this city. That's what I want to, as folks are talking roundabout versus signals, we're not even, our streets are planned to get worse every single year. That's how we're taking care of our streets, and we've got a great staff stretching every penny. That's not how, that's not a Santa Barbara way either. Let's plan on our streets getting worse every year. So we are triaging here. No project or a roundabout? Okay. I see the benefit of that, and I, the conversations that I've had with Mesa residents, that's been an okay option, just going, you know, we put up with it this long. We know when not to go to that intersection. So, and I thought this, by the way, I do think that staff, you did a great job today of really, first of all, then anytime anybody, somebody else had a question, you know, flip, you had another slide available that dealt with that question. You've thought about this long and hard and wide parameters, and it really came across as a well-thought-out presentation. So hopefully, we as a community can find a way to get more creative and not just sacrifice our streets, to say, okay, let's let them go down a little faster. We don't want to do that. Let's find a way to make this project happen without harming the rest of the city.
Can I just ask clarification from Mr. House and Mr. Rouse? When you're saying "hold off," you mean hold off on the traffic intersection signal, not hold off on doing anything, right? I'm hearing you saying, go forth with the new roundabout option.
That's my intention, yes.
And that's mine as well.
Okay. So just want to be clear, when you said "hold off," it's not just stop, it's move in a different direction to the roundabout direction. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thanks for asking, by the way.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Mr. White introduces a good cautionary tone and voice here, and I appreciate him doing that. Mr. Armstrong, we have a one-time discretionary funds of four-something million dollars that we're going to take up in January. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And would it not be appropriate to talk about this at that time?
Yeah, our plan, and that's going to be, I think it's towards the latter part of January, is we're creating a list of potential projects, and this would be on that list as one that you could potentially fund.
So, Madam Mayor, in agreement with all my colleagues here, I would think that we should postpone this consideration until that time and put it at the top of the list when we enter those discussions with the new council.
Can I also clarify about the funding and about the project timeline? It's '15-'16 that we get the $750,000. So the work session in January is for money that we could spend right now, which is the intent of that four-plus million. But then we have one or two other grants, budgets, where we can plan the $600,000 shortfall if we needed to. It's not like it's January work session or nothing in terms of funding. Am I, I mean, can we plan, if we were to say, go forward with the roundabout process, and we have to find $600,000, it seems like there's grant potential out there, but also not, we have two more budget cycles where we could split 300-300 or some other options. It doesn't have to be the January work session where we, it's the only way to find the money for this. Is that right?
I mean, the potential funding sources are pretty much two. One is general fund-type sources, which is what you'll be looking at in January, and you're right, there will be some of those opportunities in future years. And then there's streets money, which is, I think, is at a premium right now, as Councilmember White indicated. We're falling behind in street maintenance. And then the other stress on the streets fund is, we've gotten so much federal money to do bridge projects, and although our matches are relatively small, when you're matching a project like the Cabrillo Bridge, even at 11%, that starts to, that's using up a lot of our streets money on top of that.
Okay.
But you're correct. We could, if you direct us to find the money, we'll give you the options in January, and then if you don't pick it then, then we'll show you other places. But there's obviously, there's trade-offs with other projects.
Okay. But we could pick part of it in January, like a 200 out of the 600, or to put aside for, right, those are options.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, just to, thank you. I'm sorry, were you, were you finished?
I just include your good addition in my motion that we move this to discussion at that session you were talking about, and fully discuss it, whether it's all, none, part of, whatever, then. That's a worthwhile discussion we should take up then and make a decision.
So the motion is to change away from a traffic signal, move towards the new roundabout option, and discuss the funding of it as part of the options, begin discussion at the January work session.
Couldn't have said it better myself.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Murillo.
Well, I wish I could have made my comments before you made your motion because I think I disagree with you in a very fundamental way. We had decided before that the traffic signal was enough of a good solution, and we had the money for it. And I appreciate that the good people from the Mesa have come out, but I really have to stand up for the good people of the east side. And I am not going to spend, I'm sorry, I would just not support $600,000 to go to something that makes something in a good neighborhood better when we have two abominations on the east side. One is the Casique Street footbridge. The, a storm washed out that street, and the city did not fix the street, it put a rickety footbridge. That's what that neighborhood got back when, and it's still not acceptable. And then there's the Montecito Street. It's not even a bridge. The federal government calls it a culvert, and it's very dangerous in there, that area just below the roundabout. And those are serious, if we have that one-time money, I think those are serious problems that need to be fixed. And of course, I would support a roundabout, but we don't have the money. And I was extremely disappointed that no one from the Mesa Village came today to talk about what they talked about at the meeting that I attended last Tuesday, and that was to try and tax themselves to pay for road improvements on Cliff Drive. Mostly, the conversation was about Cliff Drive, you know, in the neighborhood proper, but then there was talk about raising money for the roundabout. And, you know, if someone wants to come up and address that, there was talk of a bond or of a benefit assessment district, and it seemed like at that meeting, there was really some enthusiasm for that. And I thought, yes, here's a neighborhood that's looking at taking responsibility when the city really is suffering from a lack of funds for road maintenance. And I will point out that the relinquishment we're going to take on Cliff Drive, Mr. Bailey, is it $400,000 a year for maintenance of Cliff Drive?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Murillo, on average, $400,000 a year.
Okay, that's a lot of money. And I'm pointing out to the Mesa people that we, when we took on, when we said we're taking on Cliff Drive, when we're taking on Cliff Drive, we're taking on that debt or that responsibility. So please don't think that this governing body hasn't responded to your neighborhood. And I have to say, someone lost me when they were talking about the gateway to Hope Ranch. I don't give a hoot about what it looks like going into the back door of Hope Ranch. I care about the east side and fixing what's wrong there. And so I just want to say that. If the traffic signal, what did we see there? It was a few seconds here and there, and it would really improve things. So I would stand by staff's recommendation on that. It's the fiscally responsible thing to do. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me.
About the, about this topic?
I know that wasn't very elegant.
Good timing.
So first, I want to, I want to agree with Dr. Seacord. I wish we could take all the money back that we'd spent on bulbouts. I would gladly devote it to this project. And I would also point out that, obviously, this project has been in consideration for years, and I remember when we were discussing an earlier version of this, in which, at the time, the cost estimates were approximately the same for the signal and the roundabout. And I think we had unanimous agreement on council that the roundabout was the way to go. I, early in my political career, opposed roundabouts that were not round, but actual round, roundabouts that allow the traffic to flow freely are fantastic. So really, I do think, however, there is, there obviously is a fiscal issue here. And though I agree the roundabout is the ideal, it's the ideal solution from an operational point of view, and it's also a far superior solution from an aesthetic point of view. And so in that respect, and we always like to have things looking nice in Santa Barbara, I totally agree with that, it is the quote-unquote "Santa Barbara" solution. However, as Mr. White points out, we also have another issue going on, and that's a pavement condition that's continually on the decline. And we're talking about using a really constrained source of funds to support what is primarily an aesthetic win. And I agree it's an aesthetic win. I'm not arguing with that. I cannot support spending an extra $600,000 when the traffic signal solution solves most of the problem, if we agree that most of the problem is the traffic. of the problem, if we agree that most of the problem is the traffic congestion, the periodic traffic congestion at that intersection. So I'm perfectly willing to, actually, Mr. Bailey, a question. So these, the STIP funding for this intersection is fiscal '15 and '16? How long could we delay beginning of design without jeopardizing that funding?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Francisco, probably mid-2014, spring, summer, next year.
Okay, okay. So we still have some time to think about this. I will not support spending an extra $600,000 on this project when a signal will accomplish 85% of what we're trying to achieve here. If we can find a way to further reduce that, as Councilmember Mario mentioned, there had been some other discussions on the Mesa about finding other sources of funds for this, whether it's an assessment or a generous donor, I sort of doubt those things are going to happen, but I'd like to see somebody try. $600,000 is too far for me to go, so I will not support that. But if we can find another way to fund this without having to use the same money that we're using to try to keep our streets from completely deteriorating, I'd support it. So anyway, I think everyone agrees here that a roundabout is the best solution, there's no question about that. But we also have to be careful about how we spend our streets money. According to Mr. Hotchkiss's motion, which I think is reasonable, we will essentially table this discussion until the discussion in January, considering the one-time capital funding. But I'm just putting it on the record right now, I will not support an extra $600,000 for this. Thank you.
You have some more lights on, I'll just chime in at this point. Well, I want to reiterate what we've all said before, I think Mr. Francisco said it, that all seven of us would rather see a roundabout, it's all about the money. But the more I think about it, well, two things. One is, first off, thank you for doing the additional research, and I want to thank in particular Mr. House for rousing up other people to work on this, because I think it was your passion in trying to find all options that got us to this point. And the aesthetic issue, I'll just say, right, if we end up going in this direction, okay, there are three roundabouts that I know of in town, there's the Hot Springs, there's Five Points, and there's Milpus. This one, without the aesthetic side to things, is surrounded by Ealing's Park, the Arroyo Borough Creek, the beach, and the Douglas Family Preserve. Clearly, there's plenty of beauty and aesthetics around the roundabout that no one needs to look in the middle of a roundabout for a nice tree. So, you know, if there's, I think if there's any way in terms of going to ABR and dealing with the aesthetic issue, I think we have a good nexus about how that could work, given the parameters that we have. For example, compared to Milpus Street, which did need landscaping. So I think that issue, and if that, if we do get down that path and it goes to ABR, I would appreciate the Mesa residents and others who want this option to encourage that they're okay with the less amount of aesthetic and landscaping components to it and to keep it simple, in order to make it functional and a better project. So I still go back, I appreciate what Mr. Francisco's saying, I still think about, though, why spend $850,000 on something that ultimately is not as safe, will cause more congestion down the road, and really isn't the best option? That's still a lot of money to spend on something that's not optimal. And before, when it was, the previous amount was another 500, $1.1 million more than the 850, I was like, well, that's just too much. This, I think, could be phased in, especially if we can find some other grants, if that fits getting these other safety grants, as Mr. House was saying, having a roundabout option might actually improve our chances in the application process. You're looking into that. I think it's worth looking into much more carefully and could be doable. I completely agree the issue about we have limited funds. I don't see this as an either-or with the East Side. I think there, that those issues are going to rise to the top in terms of safety concerns and funding, and we'll find funding for the East Side, we're not going to put them aside. And yeah, it's a big deal not having STIP money looking into the future, because that's been going to be eaten up by the 101 project as the strategic plan has been put together. And that's a conversation for another day about how all that works. But that's, that is a concern. So I think the motion, I think, handles what we need to do for today, and we can continue the discussion about the funding. I just would caution council not to think that if we don't put $600,000 of this one-time money in January into the pot for this project, that means the project's dead. I don't think that's the case. I think it's a part of a discussion in a bigger picture that we'll need to have in January. So, but again, I appreciate really Mr. House for the work you did behind the scenes on this. I know it's quite a lot. With that, Mr. House and then Mr. White.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, and you've summarized very well. I just want to say something to my colleague, Ms. Mario. As the person who stood up strong for having East Side safety improvements from Salinas to Milpus Street to be the number-one project in our neighborhood traffic improvement program, I agree completely with you, the essential nature of that. Who's, as you know, who's held up the Casique Bridge as a continuation of that undercrossing, which, you know, who stood up for that, right? It gets pretty personal, this is really important that we get those East Side improvements. And I do not believe this is a zero-sum game. I do believe that we're going to be able to do those improvements, and we're going to be able to come up with the funding for this as well. And I do think that the synergy between this and the safety improvement grants is critical. This will enhance our ability to achieve two or two-and-a-half million dollars' worth of improvements that will really benefit that area that we would never be able to come up with from our general fund or any other way. And I sincerely believe that there's some crossover funding here, some of the elements of this project could very well, on the edges, be paid for in part out of that, if it were held together as a system and seen as a system. I also believe that if we establish, as we're going to do today, that the roundabout is our preferred option, and we move forward with that, that that will become a magnet for funding from some of the other projects, some of the major projects that are being proposed in the area, and in particular, I think Hillside House, whatever happens there, if it happens, this will be a recipient of funding from that project, which will defer some portion of it, $600,000. I also believe that we can make a robust effort, and again, I'm very willing, as a private citizen, to be one of those who takes the lead on this, in raising some private funding to enhance both the aesthetics and the functionality of this area for the pedestrians and bicyclists and others who will be using it as well as cars. And lastly, to Mr. Francisco, I really can understand the sentiment that you're offering here. I think that the primary objectives here are not singular, it's objectives. Congestion relief is really important, but safety is a primary issue for all the users of this intersection. And if we were to continue going forward with the traffic signal here, all of this would be so remorseful a few years from now, when we read about the fatality that happened there, and we would be looking for a safety grant of some sort to put the roundabout in. And so I'm really grateful, Mr. Hotchkiss, for making this, for making this motion, and I do support it strongly.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, clearly, I will be asking staff for some private tutoring on the STIP funding, and I'm hearing that it's lost because of the 101 project. Obviously, the 101 project is a hot-button issue now, and its cost. So if its cost is lowered, is there, does that mean there's more STIP funding and so forth? So these are, that's an area which I think that, I know I'll need, that I'll be asking staff for some education on, and perhaps it would be something where council might be able to get some education as well. What I was hearing out of the testimony today from, this was very, very credible testimony today, this was very strong medicine, was that no project was better than a bad project. And so those are the pieces that, and then I did get the very inspiring email today as well of the, what do you call it, the benefit assessment, a parcel tax or whatever. Is there any willingness for, at that level? And what kind of money can it raise? It may be that it's very much smaller dollars than when you even look at a benefit assessment, it just may not be a big enough dollar amount. But, and I appreciate Mr. House's, again, your creativity, that definitely when those safety grants were being discussed, you know, is there $100,000 worth of safety improvements in that roundabout area? You know, again, whittle away at it so that nobody's getting hit too hard. Is there $100,000 worth of water quality improvements that are going on there as well? So those are the kinds of things that, if we can get this down to a small enough number that's impinging on a declining street system, then it starts to make more sense. And obviously, this is the biggest single step to getting there, but we still have some steps to go. And thank you, Mr. Hotchkiss, for your cautious, as you said, approach.
Mr. Rouse?
Yeah, as a second to the motion, I want to be clear and respond to Mr. Francisco about this, is I don't think this discussion in January is about, you know, pulling out the $600,000 automatically to do this. This is an extension of the discussion. I think going forward, and as we get more creative with looking for grants or other sources, I do not look forward to pulling it out of the streets fund, which is already tapped, in my estimation. So this is more a matter of going forward and trying to find the solution to getting where we want to go. And I agree with Mr. White, is that, you know, no project, I think, is likely better than a bad project, so, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, we know what it is.
As the maker of the motion, I just want to say that the full discussion is the purpose of my motion, not the delegation of monies at that time necessarily. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Great. We, what's the pleasure? Do we want to break, or do we want to just break? Okay, can we take a five-minute council break, or five council-minute break?
Is that six?
Okay, I'd like to call the city council meeting back to order, we can go on with item number 11.
Public hearing and amendment of citywide franchise with Marborg Industries, Inc., including recommendation B that council introduced and subsequently adopted by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending the exclusive 10-year franchise for citywide solid waste collection and disposal services granted by the city to Marborg Industries Incorporated, a California corporation, on February 12, 2013 by City Ordinance Number 5608.
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. We're here to bring to you an amendment to the franchise agreement on two elements that are contained in one exhibit, which is the diversion requirements of that contract that council adopted back in February. The first element that we are proposing to amend is to recalculate the weight-based diversion requirement, and we'll get into what these terms are. And secondly, to adjust the timeline for Marborg, the Hollard, to achieve those diversion requirements. I do want to just set a little bit of background or frame this, that we're going to talk a lot about some concepts of diversion today. In the end, what we are correcting is one number that was deeply embedded in some spreadsheets on the weight of commingled recycling. And the second was frankly a typo as it pertained to the timeline for Marborg to achieve those diversion requirements. So we're going to talk a lot about what the effects of not changing this are, but it will really boil down to one wrong number and a typo as it pertains to the timeline. This is similar to a presentation that staff shared with the Solid Waste Ad Hoc Committee on October 23, and it was the ad hoc committee's recommendation or direction that we bring this amendment forward to the full council today. And the last thing I want to say is that when we wrote the diversion requirements for the franchise agreement, that was a joint effort between city staff and Marborg. We jointly noticed the problem, you know, we found the problem together, and the solution that we're proposing here today is a joint solution between the city and Marborg. So in other words, our interests are aligned, and we are in agreement between the city and the Hollards to what the fix is. So just to review a couple of concepts, we're going to be talking about diversion requirements in the contract. And when we talk about diversion, what we're really talking about is the physical movement of recyclable material from the trash can to the recycling container. So we are going to physically take cardboard, aluminum cans, paper, glass, plastic, out of the trash can and put it into the blue recycling container. That's really what we're talking about. So it's that physical act of movement, or what we call migration. The second concept that we want to talk about is to differentiate between weight and volume. That's one of the themes that we're going to cover here today, because there is a weight-based diversion requirement in the franchise agreement, and there's a volumetric diversion requirement in the franchise agreement. So we're going to talk about that. So when we talk about weight, what we're really talking about is density, and I think everybody understands the concept of weight. The two key elements that we need to cover with this is there is a difference in the weight of trash and the weight of commingled recyclables. Commingled recyclables just frankly weigh less. You know, trash, on average, weighs about 125 pounds per cubic yard. Commingled recyclables, and I think you would experience this, if you picked up your trash can that was full, and you picked up your commingled, the blue container, the blue container's going to be substantially lighter. And that's going to be the basis for one of the mistakes that we're trying to correct. The recyclables weigh about 46 pounds per yard, whereas trash is about 125 pounds. The other concept that we are covering is that of volume. So weight, how much something weighs, gets to density. Volume is really the physical space that that material occupies. So we talk about 65 gallons of green waste, or 65-gallon cart, that's a measure of volume. And we'll get into how those two elements play into the amendment in a little bit of time. So I mentioned earlier that there are two existing requirements for diversion for Marborg to achieve in the contract. The first is a curbside volume requirement, it's a curbside volume goal, and that was that Marborg will be working with large businesses and large multi-unit residential properties to bring them to a 30% diversion rate at the curb as part of their service. So if you tally up all of their trash service, the number of trash cans they have, green waste, commingled recycling and food scraps, at least 30% of all of the gallons that they have are dedicated to diversion services, are dedicated to containers that keep material out of the landfill. And that's really what we're talking about, and that requirement under this amendment does not change. We're not going to change that, we're not proposing to change that. The second diversion requirement is a weight-based requirement, and that's that Marborg would increase the citywide diversion rate by weight by one percentage point per year. And the way that we came up with that is we looked at how much material would be moved at the curbside with the previous requirement. We said, you know, Marborg's going to move thousands of yards of commingled recycling from the trash can to the diversion containers, and by doing so, they will have made fairly large strides toward increasing the city's diversion rate by weight by moving that material at the curb. And that works, that is true, if the weight of trash and if the weight of recycling is equal. So if what I take out of the trash can weighs 125 pounds, and what I put into the recycling container also weighs 125 pounds, that would hold true. The problem is, they don't. Trash is heavier than the recycling, and that was the mistake that we made. And so we're still going to move the same number of yards from the trash can to the recycling container, we're just not going to be able to reach that 1% number. We can't do it mathematically because of the different weights of the material. So achieving the 1% diversion isn't possible, nor was it intended, that wasn't our intention. The second issue, aside from the weight and volume, is the timeline for Marborg to achieve that diversion. And the first requirement, when we talked about the curbside requirement, Marborg is charged with working with those business and multi-unit residential customers to get them to a 30% curbside diversion rate within five years. We wanted to get on that early. Staff has brought to you previously new laws and legislation like AB 341, that's putting an emphasis on working with business and multi-unit properties. We wanted to start that now, we wanted that to occur over a five-year period, and so we set it up that way. The way that we wrote the weight-based diversion requirement, it said, Marborg will achieve that 1% per year increase by weight throughout the contract term. That's throughout the 10-year contract term. That's throughout the 10-year contract term. And that's the typo. It should have said five, and we just missed it. Um, and so, that's what we're here to, uh, to solve. So, the proposed amendment that we've brought before you, uh, corrects those two issues. The first is, we recalculate the weight-based diversion requirement using the actual weight of commingled recycling, using 46 pounds per yard instead of 125. And the second, as you can see in your strike-through exhibit, makes the two timelines equal. So, Marborg will work with the curbside customers over a five-year period, they will also increase the citywide diversion rate by weight over the same five-year period, so they're on the same time horizon. So, what is the effect? Under the existing language, the first thing I want to call your attention to is that middle column, total diversion by volume. You'll see that that does not change. Marborg's still going to work with the same multi-unit and business customers to bring them to 30% diversion. Marborg's still going to be moving 46,000 yards of recycling material from the trash can to the diversion containers. That doesn't change. What does change is that by using 46 pounds per yard of commingled recycling, the, the solution that comes out of that mathematical formula is, the diversion rate by weight drops from 1% per year down to .3. And that's just the, that's a derived number, and that was our intention. On the time horizon, then, um, we set the two time horizons on the same, the same path, so that, that would occur over a five-year period for both. Um, in the end, the total diversion by weight goes from 10%, and it, it will drop down to 1.5%. So, one of the questions may be, well, you know, where, where do we stand, then, for diversion? You know, what does that do for us? We're still in good shape. And one of the things that we brought to you, when we, we brought the actual contract to you, is we said, the, the city continues to comply with state diversion mandates. The 50% now, we're at 72%. The new state goal of 75%, we're only three percentage points off of that. We're still in good shape. The second thing is that AB 341 puts a greater emphasis on program rollout and individual customer performance. This contract, by that middle column, we're right on. I mean, Marborg's working with 1,000 business and multi-unit customers to bring them to 30%. We're in good shape, as far as diversion goes.
Mr. Rouse?
Quick question. Uh, Mr. Ford, is the state, uh, are the state mandates based on weight or volume?
They're based upon, they're, they're both. They have traditionally been based on nothing but weight, and we just had our, our annual review by the state, they didn't once look at our, our weight number, they looked all about, what are we doing at a subscription level? So, they're taking into account both. Uh, I'll give an example. There are about six jurisdictions that have diversion rates of 70 or 80%, like Indio, City of Indio. City of Indio has no recycling programs, but they have heavy industry of a couple of industries, like a, like a winery, that gets rid of their, um, hops and barley at the end, or, you know, a brewery. They have this skyrocketing diversion rate and no curbside programs to speak of. So, the state now recognizes that, and when they looked at what we've got in place and what our contract is doing over the next 10 years, they were thrilled.
God, I mean, just because I could just see these exact same kind of calculation error going on at a state level, and all of a sudden, you know, nobody's in compliance, or everybody's in compliance, so...
Right. And the, and the state, you know, the state has recognized, it's something we've talked to the city council about before, you know, the, the state even backs away from their own weight-based diversion formula. It's a big black box formula, now they're saying, yeah, but what are you doing on a practical level? And I, I feel like we're in good shape with that.
All right, thank you.
So, just to, to reiterate, you know, where does it stand, or what does the proposed amendment do? 30% curbside recycling requirement will not change, as we said before. The weight-based diversion is just more realistic. It's reflective of the actual weight of commingled recycling. The third thing is that the diversion requirements then align with our agreed-upon rate model. And one thing that we put in the staff report, just so everyone's clear, this amendment has nothing to do with what we're, what we are charging customers, or what we're paying Marborg. Those numbers were correct. We set up the rates correctly, we set up Marborg's compensation correctly. This just aligns what they're doing on a diversion basis with the financial models that we use during negotiations. And fourthly, as I just said, I still firmly believe the city is positioned well to meet current and future diversion mandates that could come down from the state. So, with that, then, we're recommending that the council hold the public hearing to amend, um, the franchise agreement through an ordinance, and then, secondly, to adopt the ordinance to formally amend the franchise agreement. And I'd be glad to take any questions.
Thank you. Well, with that, I'd like to open the public hearing. Do we have any speaker slips? Nope, speaker slips, so I will close the public hearing. Uh, Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How do we monitor, uh, Matt, how do we monitor, uh, that we're actually hitting these targets, um, in the future? Is it up to Marborg to report? Is it up to us to, uh, how does it work?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, it is on a reporting basis. Um, we, Marborg and the city have already identified the 1,000 customers that they're going to be working with. We knew prior to the contract what their service levels were, and therefore, what their curbside diversion rate is. Marborg then goes out and works with those customers, brings them to 30%, and we can verify that, because the city does the billing. So, we know exactly what their capacity is at the curb.
And if, through no fault of their own, Marborg does not get the cooperation that they need, where does the responsibility lie, and what do we do about it?
Our expectation is that Marborg, using their expertise and their, you know, ability to show a customer the savings that they can achieve, will go out and get the majority of them. We did write into the contract that if somebody is just, digs their heels in and says, "No", then, they can also put that in the monthly report and tell us, this particular customer refused to, to migrate themselves to 30%. My staff, then, is going out, you know, if, if it's one or two, or just a couple, that's fine. You know, obviously, if everybody, if, if, out of 1,000 customers, 900 say no, huh, we would go look into that a little bit more. So, my staff will be going behind Marborg by a couple months and saying, you know, you want to reconsider, can we, is there a reason, or is there an obstacle that's preventing you from doing that? And so, we would work together on that.
And, and how far are, are we off that 30% figure now? In other words, how big a task lies before us?
There are about 601 business and multi-unit customers, uh, out of the 4,400 in the city, that are less than the 30%. So, it works out to about 108 a year, I believe.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we introduce an ordinance as proposed, amending the, uh, 10-year franchise agreement with Marborg. Second?
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Councilmember Committee assignment reports. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I was at the Milpus Action Task Force, uh, last week. Many of the alcohol-related problems on Milpus seemed to have disappeared. Um, this is presumably in conjunction or a result of the shift in model for, um, Casas Baranza to a sober model. Now, their interest is in street and sidewalk cleaning, flags, and other events to promote the area of, they think that Matif may go to a quarterly, uh, meeting schedule instead of monthly, because, uh, problems have, as it were, abated. And all in all, it's pretty good news, although I did receive one recent email saying, uh, we're starting to get some new visitors. Not sure why, could be a matter of, um, the seasons and the weather.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the youth council meeting last night, and they are getting ready to do their community service for the holiday season. Uh, they continue working on a report on how to combat youth violence, and they're planning for a leadership conference in the new year. I attended, uh, an event at the downtown library. There's a, a program called the Reading Ambassadors, and it teaches third graders, it taught third graders from McKinley how to read out loud to their siblings and their friends. And I congratulate the staff there for that, um, successful program, and if, they might get more money to expand to other schools. So, it's very exciting. Um, I attended Wellness Wednesday at the Teen Coalition, and I ate raw broccoli. They, they, they made really healthy snacks. I don't know about you, I usually avoid it, but it was delicious, they, you put some hummus on it, and so, I just, it, it was really fun to, to have the adults, um, trying healthy snacks, and then, the youth-serving organizations are, um, finding ways to serve healthy snacks to, to their teens. And then, we had so much fun, um, Madam Mayor, at the, at the mural dedication at Santa Barbara High School, and, young artists and, um, and their parents, and it was, it was just delightful, and it's just great to see them active and creative. And I wanted to give a shout-out to Miguel Rodriguez and Danny Mesa, who are young people themselves, who went through the Arts Alliance Program, and now they're teaching the younger, uh, young, the younger children. They're like teenagers and early twenties, so now they're passing it on to other kids on the east side. I'm just so pleased. Thank you.
Santa Barbara Junior High, yeah, I think you said high school, so inside, and usually you see these murals outside, so to see it inside as you go to backstage of the Marjorie Luke is really quite special, so... Mr. House?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, just, uh, real quick, I want to report on, um, Visit Santa Barbara's Board Meeting. I went there this morning. Um, what an amazing group of people. Um, Scott Redman, from the waterfront, came and made a report on cruise ships, and how we're dealing with that, and what we're looking at in the future. You know, I just want to report, because I didn't know what their response would be, but there was a really, a positive response from Visit Santa Barbara, uh, board members, most of which own hotels, or, you know, it was really interesting to hear their conversation. I think they're eager to find what the right balance is, you know, what's the right number? And they were very appreciative of, um, of Scott and his teams, um, very strong, um, approach to the environmental, uh, issues. Scott also reported that the report that was in the Independent recently by Matt Ketterman was really accurate, and, um, was helpful in conveying what their efforts are and what they're doing. Lastly, on that point, um, Visit Santa Barbara's been working on a survey to really begin to get down to what the positive or negative impacts are of the cruise ships, and we'll be hearing about that early in the new year.
Thank you. Well, on, uh, Friday and Saturday, I had the, well, Friday, I had the pleasure of meeting the Prince of Spain. Not many ti- not many, uh, times you get to do that, and it does sound so cliche, but the prince really is charming. Um, he, Prince Felipe of Spain, he truly is, and I, uh, want to acknowledge the trust for historic preservation, for putting together the reception, uh, that happened on Friday evening, and then, at the same time, the U.S.-Spain Council, there, there's this group that meets every year, once a year, they go back and forth between the U.S. and Spain. The chair was, uh, U.S. Senator Menendez, who just stepped down, and U.S. Senator Kane from Virginia took over the chair, and then they have their counterparts in Spain, and they chose to be here at the same time to coincide with the prince's visit, and is also to commemorate the 300th anniversary of the birth of Junipero Padre Serra. So, it was, um, a very auspicious occasion, and, uh, great connection between the two countries, and it was an honor to be able to participate in that. I particularly want to thank Marcelo Lopez. Uh, there were, there were two different events going on, converging at one point, and then, not converging it afterwards, and the logistics behind a lot of it, uh, he was helping that, uh, helped me out with, with street closure issues, and who knows, and safety and security issues, um, and my Spanish translation of my speech, so, thank you for that. And then, also, the California Mission Foundation is part of the U.S.-Spain Council, and, um, a member who was here, who lives here, was very much involved in all the details for the, the visit. So, um, it was really quite special and unique, and, uh, it was a great, uh, weekend for that. I also just want to mention, on Friday morning, I know it's been in the press quite a bit, but just to mention that there was a meeting held, uh, at the request of the Common Sense 101, uh, Coalition Members of the Monocito Association, meeting with District Five of Caltrans, and it was a meeting between the, those two groups, myself, uh, Mr. Francisco joined, and Mr. Casey from the city, and then Supervisor Carvahal, and the Director Publica, works for the county, and, and, uh, Mr. Tittle, who works for the supervisor, were in attendance, as observers mostly. It was, uh, issues that our planning commission here has dealt with, with, the Union Pacific Bridge was not on the agenda, that's why it wasn't really talked about, if you asked, wondered why that, the case, reading the press. It was all about data, and safety data, related to the left-hand ramps, and, um, a, assumption that we all thought, and, and I heard when I was in Sacramento this summer, that the two groups were going to meet together and work out the details and the facts about what the facts are in the ramps. And unfortunately, in my opinion, District Five staff chose not, for whatever reason, chose not to do their own analysis, was just listening, that's what they say, we're here to listen. Um, I'm not quite sure how that's going to help resolute, get, get to some form of resolution, so the conversation continues, uh, but it was, it was a frustrating meeting for a lot of people, i- in the sense that we thought we were going to come to some resolution more so than we did. There, and so, I, you can ask me about details, but I just wanted to expand on that, and, um, I'm sure SB CAG, we have a meeting this Thursday, there's nothing on the agenda, but some issues may come up during public comment or something. So, uh, with that, we have a couple of closed sessions, if you could read those.
Item number 12, conference with labor negotiator, and item number 13, conference with legal counsel pending litigation.
Great, and then we will recess to 6 o'clock, where we'll be back here at 6. Thank you. Good luck, I'd like, okay, I'd like to re-cumine, uh, for the evening session, if we could have a roll call, please. Councilmember Francisco?
Here.
Hotchkiss?
Here.
House? Mario?
Here.
Rouse?
Here.
White? Mayor Schneider? Here. Uh, councilmembers House and White could not stay, and they will watch the video about this before, um, we make our appointments. So, first off, is there any public comment on items not on the agenda? Do you have any speaker slips for that? No? Okay. I'll close the public comment, and if you can read item number 14.
Interviews for city advisory groups.
So, this is the last, uh, session of interviews we have for boards and commissions. I want to thank everyone who has applied to be on a city board or commission. In a lot of cases, we have many more applicants than spaces available, and that's a good problem to have. Um, it also means that many great applicants won't be seated this time around. We just encourage you to keep trying if you haven't, um, because it's really, I'm, it's really quite a blessing, actually, to see all this interest in serving on a city board and commission, so thank you. Uh, what I'll do is, I'm going to start the alphabet tonight, uh, at CI. Uh, we had a request for some, uh, scheduling issue, uh, so, so, we'll go in alphabetical order, starting with CI, and then, if you have not interviewed before, you are welcome to come up and, uh, have, you know, and come on up and explain your interest in being on a board or commission. If you already serve, you can, uh, talk about your experiences thus far, and why you're interested in continuing to serve. And if you have applied for more than one, um, position, you can do both, or two or three, whichever, however many you applied for, at that one time. You don't have to keep on coming up when that position is, um, called. So, I hope that all makes sense. We'll start, as I said, with CI, which is, uh, the Civil Services Commission. If you'd like, if you are an applicant and like to come up at this point, now's your chance. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Schneider, members of the city council, and, Mr. Armstrong. My name is Catherine McKee, and I am asking to be reappointed to the Civil Service Commission. And there were a series of questions that, that we were asked to prepare for, so I thought I would do that, and I know that I have limited time. So, the first question is, am I willing and able to devote the time necessary? And yes, in fact, I do have the time and dedication to perform the duties of the Civil Service Commission. And what is it that I know? Well, since I've served on the commission before, I have gained a very strong understanding of our mission of hearing appellants on their suspensions or terminations, both of which take tremendous serious thought and analysis in order to render fair decisions. What kind of experience do I have that makes me successful in serving? Well, about a 30-year career in human resources, both in union and non-union environments, and the companies that I worked for were Mattel Toys, 20th Century Fox Film Corporation, and then First Interstate Bancorp, when there was one, and then a British bank, Standard Chartered Bank, I was sold off to them. I was a senior vice president in those latter two assignments, and led a fantastic team of, of human resources professionals. The reason that I want to be reappointed to the city advisory group is because I feel that I make a contribution to our thought processes, our deliberations, and our decision-making. We're a great team of people, and we don't always agree on, on the results, but our decisions are enriched by the debates that take place in order for us to make those very serious decisions. Are there interests or issues I'm desiring? decisions. Are there interests or issues I'm desirous of promoting? The commissions worked hard in the last year to create clear definitions and refine our procedures, to aid the appellant, to aid the city and the commission, and ensuring that we have the information we need in a timely fashion. Then there were a couple of extra questions, for those of us seeking reappointment. And what the most significant or rewarding experience during my tenure? Well, participating with a group of commissioners who work well together, as I said, we work through our disagreements, and we maintain collegiality in order to make good decisions, and that wasn't always the case. And are we operating as well as we could? Well, improvements that we've made, and you'll be hearing about those next month, I think we've made some wonderful improvements. And then there were three last questions. What experience do I have in supervising, evaluating, or disciplining employees? Well, as a senior executive in HR, spend a lot of time coaching and counseling supervisors and managers, as well as employees, on their performance, their progress, and the need for some due process, in order to help them improve so that they can retain their jobs. And my perception of the role of discipline in a work environment, well, it provides due process to people, so that you're trying to be fair, and you're trying to give people a chance, as I said, to improve, and it's a very important process, it's one of the most important processes, to help employees be good employees. And then the last question was, am I familiar with affirmative action programs? Well, at 20th Century Fox, the movie industry, which is not exactly known for its affirmative action, still, I was asked by the chairman of the board to take on the responsibility of preparing the very first affirmative action plans in an interesting environment, and we were very successful. And we were the only studio, by the way, that actually performed according to what the Screen Actors Guild contract required, which was portraying the American scene realistically. And we were the only studio that wasn't sued by the Screen Actors Guild, because we actually did that, and I'm very proud of that. So, that's who I am, that's what I've done, and I'm hoping that you will reappoint me.
Thank you, and thank you for your past service. Any questions?
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
How many times did you meet this last year? Do you recall?
We meet every other month, and we've had those meetings. They're very short meetings, because we usually don't have a lot of business. We've had, I believe, this year, two hearings, and many times, we're scheduled for hearings, and we've had at least two or, if not three, canceled this year because they were able to settle the--
Resolutions, yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope, thank you very much. Anyone else for Civil Services Commission? Community Development and Human Services. Community Events and Festivals. Nope. See, we're going right around Creeks Advisory. Okay, Downtown Parking, I see a couple of them, come on up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Kate Schwab. I'm the Marketing and Communications Director for the Santa Barbara Downtown Organization, and I'm applying for the Downtown Parking Committee. I served on the Downtown Parking Committee for eight years, from 2000 to 2008, so I know a lot about downtown parking. So, why do I want to be appointed to this city advisory committee? Well, now, in my new position with the downtown organization, parking, or the lack of it, or the cost of it, really affects my membership, my constituents, my people. So, I want to be a part of that discussion because of how much it affects my membership and their employees. Sort of, did you, anybody have any questions, or should I? I mean, there are three questions that you might throw at me, so--
Say whatever you want.
Okay.
Miss Mario, did you have a question?
Well, I had a question, maybe about conflict of interest, or is there a category for a downtown organization person to be on the Downtown Parking Committee? I'm sorry, Kate, I love you, I'm just wondering if there's--
I know, thank you.
Sorry, everybody, she's my friend.
Many years we've had, we've had members of the staff of downtown organization on the Downtown Parking Committee.
So it's okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, I mean--
Yeah, I mean, if anything would come up related to the DO contract, they'd recuse themselves.
Right.
Okay.
And that's happened in the past, yep.
I think so.
Yep.
Well, this will be my first time on the committee as a downtown organization person, before it was with Borders, actually, as a retailer, and I think I did not serve while I was at MTD, but then I was off, yeah. So, any other questions?
Well, I would, I mean, I would just ask that you make sure that when you do need to recuse yourself, because it does seem like there's a close relationship there.
Well, for example, we've had staff of MTD on transportation and circulation, and they would recuse themselves when MTD issues came up.
That's very tight, too.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cooper?
Madam Mayor, council, thank you for allowing me to speak. I, like Kate, spent eight years on the Downtown Parking Committee. It's one of those committees that you just can't leave alone. You've been on it, I think most of the downtown organization members have been on it, and one of the reasons I'm here tonight is that one of the staff members and several of my friends asked me if I wanted to do it again. I'm here to serve. Forty years downtown, as a businessman, parking has been something that is important to everybody that's down here. I know it firsthand. I see the abuse with the, what used to be the shuffle, but there needs to be some way to control it. One of the reasons I'm late tonight, couldn't get into Lot 10. Now, that's a farmer's market, but still, we have the problem going on with the Chapala developments, and I just don't think Louise Lowry-Davis is going to be enough, even if the parks gives it to the parking committee. So, one of the other things I always felt, having been in San Francisco and having seen the Golden Gate Bridge, I used to live in Sausalito and commute, they fund a lot of public transportation out of the tolls that come across that bridge. And I still think that our rates, while enjoyed by many, are still perhaps not market, and I would like to see perhaps the committee using some of those funds to fund other forms of transportation with the budget cuts that we're all facing here. So, if you have a question, let me know. If not, I'm here to serve.
I didn't catch your name.
Michael Cooper, I'm sorry.
Michael Cooper.
Okay.
We're kind of--
I called him up, so he didn't say his name, I'm sorry.
We've kind of been around the block a couple times here.
I didn't recognize you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Onto Fire and Police Commission. Come on up.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Judy Stevens. I've lived in Santa Barbara coming on 10 years, following retirement. My husband and I live in the Oak Park neighborhood. My background is, obviously, as an Episcopal priest. I've been one for 25 years, serving several churches, and before that, I was a political scientist in Washington, DC, specializing in American national politics, working for the Brookings Institution, and the Congressional Research Service, and American University. I am willing and able to serve on the Advisory Commission. I don't know a lot about policing, but I do know something about the tension in American life, almost from the beginning, between ordered liberty and civil liberties, and I think that since 9/11, anything having to do with order and the police function is a highly controversial topic, and I hope that I could bring to that some of my personal characteristics, including common sense, and a sense of humor, and a lot of experience working with public and private organizations, working together with a variety of people. And that's, I think, responsible, responsive to the questions, the written questions.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Questions? Nope, thank you very much. Anyone else for Fire and Police Commission? Okay. Harbor Commission. Yes?
Madam Mayor, if I could say, one person couldn't be here, Corey Bedlin, and sent a letter, I don't know if he received it. He's been on the Harbor Commission for the last four years, done a great job, but in all three occasions when he was due here, he couldn't come, and requests to be, have his slot sort of reserved, if that's at all possible, and apologizes for his inability to appear, it was all the conflicts with jobs. And I think Scott Redman sent a, around a letter that was recommending--
Yeah, I saw the email, we can--
Thank you, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Make that decision when we make the appointments. Okay. Historic Landmarks.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Philip Suting, and I am currently on the Historic Landmarks Commission, have served on the Historic Landmarks Commission for, I think, about 12 years, have been on advisory boards for 16. I'm a native of Santa Barbara. I think I mentioned I was a landscape architect, but if I didn't, I am. I think one of the things that I bring to the HLC is a hands-on experience and learn, learning, working closely with staff. Being able to chair the meeting has been very important to me, to run the meeting on time, and to give applicants a fair shake, no matter what their application is.
Thank you for your past service.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it for, I know Mr. Mahan was here earlier. Housing Authority, I think that we're set there. Library Board, come on up.
Mayor Schneider, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, Mr. Armstrong, good evening. My name is Milt Hess, and I'm here to express my interest in being appointed to the Library Board. I am willing and able to devote the time to be an effective contributor. I'm retired. My only time commitments are to staying in shape, my garden, and my volunteer activities. I have attended Library Board meetings for the last several months, and I can see very clearly that the board has a good working relationship with the library director and her key staff. The director provides status updates to the board, and keeps the board informed of key projects and performance metrics. What I have not been able to observe, however, is the board's involvement in strategic planning issues. If the board serves primarily to receive and comment on status reports, I believe that's too narrow a role. The library's role in the community is changing with the evolution of technology and our schools, and the board needs to be part of the strategic planning process. So, as for me, I earned a doctorate in engineering science from Columbia University, and I worked at Bell Laboratories for 10 years as a research engineer and a computer center manager. I spent the rest of my career at an IT and system development company called American Management Systems, and I was a technologist, a senior manager, and later an international consultant. My wife and I moved to Santa Barbara in 2002, shortly after I retired. On 2000, in 2005, 2006, I served on the Santa Barbara County Civil Grand Jury, and I was the principal author of two reports, and served as chair of the editorial committee. I've been a computer coach at the Santa Barbara Jewish Federation for over 10 years now, doing one-on-one assistance to individuals, and I helped start the computer coaching program at the library about three and a half years ago, and I still volunteer at the library every Tuesday afternoon, which is where I was today. Finally, I've been a member of the Board of the Upper East Association for four years, and served as president in 2011 and 2012. Why would I like to be appointed to this group? I think a key role for the Library Board should be to help the library director to envision the future of the library and to plan for it, and I would like to help frame that vision. There are no interests or issues that I wish the promoter change, excuse me, beyond what I just explained. And with that, I'm open to questions.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss?
You mentioned strategic planning, and then you were just talking a little bit about that. Now, do you have some specific ideas, or you just want to see the board more involved with the future direction of the library?
The latter. I think that, I think that there needs to be a goal for three, five, 10 years, maybe not 10, 10's too far, but three to five years out, and a strategy to achieve it, and then progress against that strategy and those goals should be reported, not just what's going on today, this week, this month, next month.
Okay, thanks very much.
Miss Mario?
Yeah, I'd like to know that you're going to be able to get along with library staff. I mean, here on my job, I ask them for information, I respect them, I work with them, but, you know, there has to be some kind of trust. You know, I see you're a little bit of a rebel, which is not a bad thing, but can you tell me that you're a team player, and that you respect the staff?
Well, I have been a computer coach at the library for three and a half years, working with the reference staff, and I have established a relationship with the library director, and I haven't been fired for my coaching job.
You haven't been asked to be coached, is that?
Sorry?
You haven't asked to be coached, you're coaching, yes?
No, actually, I was the first coach. I approached the reference folks with an idea for a coaching program, and they, at that time, were looking for somebody to do that, and so I started it, and then they brought on other folks, and now the program is every afternoon, from 1:00 to 5:00, every day of the week.
Great, cool.
And on Tuesdays.
There you go. That's what happens when you have a good idea, then you have to volunteer for it. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Living Wage Advisory Committee. Measure P Committee, come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Robert Mercado, and I actually have two different councils, the Neighborhood Advisory Council and the Measure P Council. I'm actually an accountant, working for a medical device maker over in Galida. I have actually lived in the east side for a couple of years now, came back from Ventura, where I was working in the banking industry, until 2008 happened. I've been very involved in a lot of politics here in town. I know quite a few of you, and I've been working with a few of you on separate issues. I'm really interested in being in the Neighborhood Advisory Council. I've been calling my, my home is in the east side, and I'm very involved in seeing it being promoted, and making sure that we get it up to snuff, and seeing that it's not ignored. I want to make sure that everyone gets a fair shake. Measure P, I want to make sure that everyone is heard, as more of a resident role. I'm not a patient, and I'm not a physician, so I just wanted to be a part of the, part of that measure, to see, you know, I'm the humdrum, button-down guy, so I wanted to see--
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Hotchkiss?
Good question. Did you say the Neighborhood Advisory Council would be your preference of these two?
That would be the preference.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for Measure P, come on up.
Good evening. My name's Stephen Pratt. I've been living here for about nine years, living in Galida. Actually, I'm a software programmer, I work at Yardi Systems, have worked here for nine years, that's what made me move down here. And I've also been local in politics here in town, and I love living here, and lately, I felt like I want to give back and serve on an advisory committee, and so I felt like Measure P, I'd like to be involved with. I've heard that it hasn't met quorum lately, in a year and a half or so, so I'd be, you know, interested in trying to bring it back and getting it active again. I think it serves an important advisory role for the police department, and, you know, I feel like the public needs to have that role in things. It's important to have some oversight, and, you know, I agree with the voters who passed the measure back in 2006, that, you know, the police department has finite resources, we have to make sure that they're going after hard crime, and the proper, you know, priorities are placed on them. And so, you know, I'd be willing to learn and listen, and, you know, hear grievances, and try to, you know, lend a helping hand for people. and try to, you know, lend a helping hand for people. And so, you know, I'm a programmer, so I'm very detail-oriented and like solving problems. And so, I feel like that's how I could help this committee.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
You.
Anyone else for Measure P? On Mosquito and Vector Management District Board. Okay, Neighborhood Advisory Council.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and Mr. Armstrong. My name is Kristi Haynes. I have lived in Santa Barbara for 25 years. I'm an educator specializing in violence prevention and restorative justice with 20 years' experience in this field, and I'm applying today for the Neighborhood Advisory Council position. I've been working with our neighborhood youth and families, schools, juvenile detention centers, community-based programs, city officials, and police, and probation. I attended the City College, and I transferred to Antioch, where I received my master's degree in psychology. I'm a member of the School Board Violence Prevention Committee. I'm the former Director of Prevention and Domestic Violence Solutions and the current founder of Dating Violence Prevention Program called What Is Love that works with all of our schools in the county. Through my work in volunteering, I've established mutually respectful relationships with our school district, city staff, and community stakeholders. I've experienced firsthand how collaboration and cooperation can improve the sustainable delivery of programs and services, especially for our understerved families and youth. My restorative justice and fiscal management experience will enable me to deliver neighborhood-based representation, to advocate for youth and families, engage resident participation, and to serve as a vehicle for resolution for neighborhood issues. I have thoroughly read through the purpose and duties and qualifications for this advisory council, and I believe I'll be a very effective member. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I saw some other movement out there. Come on up.
Hello, Madam Mayor, City Council, and City Administrator. My name is Sebastian Aldana Jr., and I am reapplying for the Neighborhood Advisory Council position. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you, Madam Mayor, for reelection Frank and Bendy, for winning, and looking forward to working with you. I am willing and able to dedicate the time necessary to serve if appointed. I have served for the past six years, three with the former Franklin Center Advisory Committee, and now three with the newly formed NAC. Two months ago, I was nominated and elected Chair, and would like to continue. As most incumbents would say, there's a lot more to be done, so I would like to continue. In the, in the past six years, I have been very instrumental with the neighborhood I have represented, which is the east side. The environment on the Milpus Corridor is much cleaner, and the neighborhood east of Milpus has seen its share of capital improvements. It didn't come easy, but I am honored to have been part of both areas, both Milpus Corridor and the residential area. A couple of reasons I would like to be reappointed is I enjoy working with the public, both business owners and residents, and I've seen improvements throughout the neighborhoods, many coming from the Advisory Council. One item I feel we should focus, not the main, but just, it's an item, is working together a little more cohesively with, with staff. You know, they're the professionals, they're the, the main people, but just a little, you know, transparency, unity, just mutual respect, just one happy family. And that's, that's it right there.
Thank you, and thank you for your past service. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Quick question.
Yes.
I gather from what you're saying that you feel the, the council has been, to some degree, effective?
Yes. Yeah. As far as the NAC?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. It's, it took a little bit. The Franklin, you know, we got things done. For whatever reason, the NAC just took a little time to gel and.
Right, but now it's.
But now we're on track.
Yeah.
And I'm happy, and looking forward to.
Congratulations, congratulations on your chairmanship.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other applicants for the Neighborhood Advisory Council. Come on up.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Armstrong, and City Council members for this opportunity to apply for the Neighborhood Advisory Council. My name is Susan LaFond, and I've lived on the west side for 23 years, two years as a renter and 21 as a homeowner. I'd like to be of service to my neighbors and to all the residents of the city. A couple of years ago, I participated in the Thrive Project. We had several meetings at the West Side Boys and Girls Club, so I am very aware of the challenges facing our downtown and neighborhoods. I have a genuine concern for our beautiful city and all of its residents. Regarding beautification, I have been a member of the Santa Barbara Horticulture Society, a master gardener, a board member of the Santa Barbara Rose Society, and I've also volunteered up at the rose garden at the Mission. A particular concern to me is keeping our city's streets clean and safe. I feel that dumping is a blight that I would like to help remedy. I am also encouraging neighborhood watch groups. I'd like to participate in that. I would also like to say how impressed I was with the City Council and the city staff regarding the Dario Peany property on Chino Street in Pedro Gosa, since it is in my neighborhood. I have to say that was a very offensive blight on the west side. So, the, I feel these neighborhoods offer a unique downtown urban lifestyle, which include many renters, families, and children and working people. I would look forward to thoughtfully analyzing city issues such as the hedge ordinance, traffic circulations, and ways to improve our neighborhood. I work at home. I am a self-employed travel agent, so I have, my schedule is my own, and so I have plenty of time to participate in this group. I would like to thank you for your time and attention, and I look forward to participating on the Neighborhood City, I'm sorry, Neighborhood Advisory Council. Thank you once again.
You. Any questions?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. No, thank you very much.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Abby Fregosa. I'm a resident of the Santa Barbara's east side. I'm also born and raised local of Santa Barbara. I'm motivated and able to devote the necessary time to serve on the east side neighborhood Advisory Council, or Neighborhood Advisory Council. I know that the City Advisory Council recognizes where changes need to be made and work with the city to resolve these issues, such as more street lighting, safer crosswalks, and provides community liaison such as Mr. Aldana. I believe I would be successful in serving because I'm confident in voicing my concerns and thoughtfully working towards solutions. Being a resident of the east side, I recognize the many walks of life that share the space and believe that with communication and proper resources, there's a place for everyone. Some of my experiences include for about three years, I was a part of a team that would prepare meals and serve it to the residents of Transition House. I know they regularly welcome community groups to come in and serve meals, but we made an extra effort to actually eat with the residents and commune with them and serve them that way. We also took extra steps to provide Christmas parties and Christmas and July parties for the residents whose children maybe wouldn't get to experience those types of things outside of Transition House. I was also able to get local businesses to donate gifts to those events. In addition to that, for about eight years, I worked with Santa Barbara City College and the Continuing Education Department in the ESL program. I created and implemented federally funded curriculum to help second language learners become accustomed to living in California. The students studied health and medical options such as learning about Santa Barbara's neighborhood clinics, dental clinics, medical clinics, proper emergency procedures like making a 911 phone call, basic things like that, that we are all familiar with, but someone who's just learning English might not be aware of. I also know the harm and detriment of living next door to an active drug dealer and working with law enforcement to see all members arrested and convicted. And I would like to be appointed to a Neighborhood Advisory Council because when I see an issue in my neighborhood, I'm not satisfied to simply sit by and hope that someone else fixes it. I want to be involved in the process in the hopes that everything that can possibly done has been done. So I'm not interested in simply appeasing residents. I really, truly hope to discover workable solutions as part of the council. I'm interested in seeing personally RV parking on the east side under control by getting appropriate signage in place on residential streets, all residential streets. I'm also interested in seeing more permit parking for residents and timed street parking for non-residents in areas that are zoned, both commercial and residential. I wanted to see change in street sweeping hours in residential areas. Since it is such an impacted community, a lot of those residents are sleeping very close to the street, their bedrooms and beds are right there, and when a street sweeper's coming by at 1:00 in the morning, that can be difficult for families with small children. I'd like to see more effort in promoting habits of the east side cleanup, in, in addition to just cleanups, but also signage, say in Ortega Park, listing why broken glass might be harmful to barefoot children or pets, things of that nature. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions? Pretty thorough.
Okay, thank you.
That's great. Thanks. Anyone else for Neighborhood Advisory Council? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Gary Lytle, and I was prepared for it to be informal, so I'll just get right to it. Yes, I do have the time and willing to put forth the effort and have the ability to serve on this council. I do understand what the Advisory Committee is supposed to be doing. I've been involved in numerous things, neighborhood cleanups through my churches that I've been involved in. I myself volunteer through United Way, Santa Barbara Education Office, County Office. I mentor at the Santa Barbara Mission. And then just recently, within the last two months, I was held up at Gunpoint in West Beach where I live. This kind of got me to focus on awareness, awareness of what thinks going, things that are going on in your neighborhood, awareness of what's going on around you, and so forth. I am currently a student also, and I've been announcing to all my classmates, you know, be aware of what's going on. I just thought this was another step towards being involved, being involved in the communities, being that liaison between the resources of the city and the thoughts and concerns of what the community wants to do. I hear it from neighbors, "We want safer this, we want safer that," but I don't hear ideas. And so I ask those, you know, "What's your idea about this? What do you want to do?" When, who is the person that you're talking to about this? So, we do have neighborhood, in West Beach, we do have neighborhood meetings. I know Officer Wojo has been there numerous times speaking with us, and, and we appreciate, we appreciate the involvement. But I just feel that, you know, vehicle speeds racing through our neighborhood, lighting can be an issue, transience, which aren't a negative thing. I don't think I was held up by a transient myself. I thought I was held up by someone with a gun, and I can't say who that is. I think it's, it's all key about participation. I get out and I shake the hands, and I meet the neighbors now, and I try to get involved as much as I possibly can. I think I've hit all of my areas that I wanted to explain, so I'll leave it to you.
Thank you. Ms. Maria?
I've just noticed that somewhere here it says you live on the lower west side, but your application says lower east side. You're east side, right?
No, I'm West Beach, so that would be.
Oh, I see.
Lower west side. Closest you can get.
Well, it's West Beach, which is a whole different animal, so that's okay. But we can.
Okay, so West Beach.
Work that out.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll figure that out before the appointment process. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for Neighborhood Advisory Council? Nope. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Uribe, and I grew up in Santa Barbara. I am self-employed and have a flexible schedule, so I have time to commit to the commission as well as any type of committee work. The Parks and Recreation Department has a wide variety of activities under its purview, and one of the things that I'm most appreciative about the department is that the work that they do, and thereby the commission, is that they're involved in positive interactions with the community. And that includes the recreation aspect, nonprofit partnership programs, culture, and youth components. And these are enlivening to the community, and I would like to be part of this work. Having grown up in Santa Barbara in a bilingual, bicultural, Mexican-American household, one thing that has always been a focus of mine has been the pursuit of greater exchange and interaction of different sectors of the community. From fun activities and in participation of programs offered by the department to civic engagement, and this would be a perfect opportunity for me to continue this type of work. In terms of specific things that interest me about the commission, part of the calling is to provide quality recreation and cultural experiences and community services to benefit the quality of life for Santa Barbara residents, and in particular, the cultural experiences is part of an interesting piece to me because we have a very rich culture in, in Santa Barbara, rich cultures, and they're worth sharing and learning from. Lastly, another interest of mine is optimizing community partnerships in an effort to increase efficiencies. I was writing grants during the recession, and there were, that was a time when monies were allocated primarily to partnerships that were working well. So this is the brilliance of austerity. And without a doubt, I'm always fascinated by how do we increase efficiencies without necessarily increasing costs, whether it's in my own household, in my business, or in our city and city departments. So, thank you for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Parks and Recreation, come on up.
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. My name is Michael Nelson. I live at 901 Bass Street in Santa Barbara, and I moved here from San Diego this summer, and I'm anxious to get involved in the public affairs of the community. I know the competition for the Parks and Recreation Commission will be keen, but I just need to get started. And I think you may understand, when you hear my background, why I think Parks and Recreation is in fact the best fit for me. I worked for 30 years for the state of California and the state of Maryland, planning, acquiring, developing, and in some cases, managing parks and open space areas. While in Maryland, I was Assistant Secretary for Capital Programs, and I approached those disciplines from a statewide perspective of managing an entire public land system. I also administered a local grants program that provided grants to local governments and municipalities for waterway improvements and recreation in parks. In San Diego, I worked for the state of California as the Executive Officer for the San Diego River Conservancy. The approach of the conservancy was one from a watershed perspective. Our principal statutory objective was the development of a river park from the mountainous headwaters to the mouth in the Pacific. And the way we did that was to leverage grants of general obligation bonds with local contributions from cities and the county, the private sector, as well as foundation and charities. We were guided by a Citizens Advisory Council called the San Diego River Coalition, which had 70 member organizations. The questions that I was supposed to answer are priorities for city parks and recreation. I wish I had some shiny, bright new program to unveil and recommend to you, but no, I think what you need to do is figure out a way to establish reliable annual funding for a program of deferred and critical maintenance. As the economy improves, your visitation is going to go up, and the stress is going to increase on your wonderful system, which I enjoy. to increase on your wonderful system, which I enjoy. So I don't know if a sinking fund, a non-lapsing sinking fund is possible that can handle a mix of revenue streams or not, but it would make a big difference. The other question is unmet recreation needs. I've been here long enough to know that this council, its mayor and staff, seem to be able to address the unmet recreation needs and the new priorities as they emerge. I think the Neighborhood Services Program, or the Neighborhood Services Initiative, is a good example of just that. The final question was on a youth issue. I don't want to give short shrift to very serious issues like substance abuse, youth violence, obesity, but I don't really know enough to talk about it. So, but what I do know is employment is a big issue for youth. My son, I didn't think he'd ever graduate. I didn't think he'd ever find a job. And so programs like Parks has the jobs program that puts them to work, I know it's oversubscribed, is a real big thing and a real value to the community. It makes a big difference. So I've answered your questions. I know that I'm a newcomer to Santa Barbara, but I am no stranger to the challenges associated with managing a park system as extensive as yours, and I appreciate any consideration you can offer my candidacy, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss.
No, though, I just wanted to say thank you for being willing to jump in, having been here less than six months.
Yes, yeah.
Well, great, that's terrific. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Ms. Mario.
I, more of a comment. I just wanted to let you know, I think you're qualified for the Creeks Committee and maybe the Mosquito and Vector Management District. Because when I hear somebody use the word watershed, I think you bring something that not everybody does. So, and this is for other people who may be listening. When you apply for one of our advisory groups, pick a second and third choice. We have wonderful people come up, and like, they've only put one thing, but like you say, there's a lot of competition, or there might be incumbents, and so.
Sure, I understand that. And that's good advice.
And we do this, we do this every six months, and so please apply for other positions.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for Parks and Recreation? Come on up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Jim Heaton, and I thank you for the opportunity to be considered to an appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission. I'd like to give you a little bit of my background. I was drawn to Santa Barbara for studies initially. It's a beautiful place, and I embraced the opportunity to study ecology and biodiversity here. When I graduated UCSB with my degree in zoology, I was sad to leave, but well-suited for my next adventures as a Peace Corps volunteer in Morocco. My volunteers abroad were challenging and extremely rewarding in the experience I gained. I learned to break down cultural and language barriers, and most importantly, to listen to the individuals and communities where I worked. I was successful in helping communities organize, plan, finance, and build projects and develop programs that suited their needs. I chose to continue along that path, receiving a graduate fellowship with an AmeriCorps service, and following my master's studies in economics and community development, I was a project manager for a community development corporation in a small city. There, I was responsible for developing a master plan for revitalization of the downtown and riverfront. Through public process, we were able to develop common vision and an adopted plan to remediate brownfield sites and create city parks and programmable open spaces for the community, while also creating tourism and visitors-serving commercial opportunities. I drew on those experiences in my subsequent role as an International Fulbright Scholar, where my focused studies, my focused studies were on participatory community development. Eventually, I was able to make my way back to Santa Barbara. I worked for years at the county as a planner, and then in redevelopment, and continued my service with the Gleta Water District. From these experiences, I have a comprehensive understanding of the local public process. I know how to navigate the regulatory environment, engage the community and local stakeholders, and build consensus to guide change. I see the Parks and Recreation Department as one of our city's most important stewards of local resources. I also realize the department, commission's role goes well beyond maintenance of our parks, a job the folks have done amazingly well despite the challenging economic times. I personally have had an opportunity to take advantage of the services offered through the recreation programs, and now appreciate the resource it provides to my family and young children. In recent years, I've had a chance to explore many of our parks and open spaces and learn with my daughter, who has become somewhat of a playground aficionado. By attending and watching commission meetings, as well as meeting with Director Rapp, I've gained an even further appreciation for the breadth of the department, from advising on street trees, operation of the golf course and golf course and creeks, to advising on the zoo board, and seemingly countless other responsibilities. I am prepared to dedicate the time and energy necessary for this role. I will be able to listen to our community members and draw on my experiences to develop collaborative partnerships and be a supportive leader to our department's staff. I will make sound decisions regarding our many programs and responsibilities as a commissioner, while advising city officials and you as our council for planning, budgeting, operations for the future of our Parks and Recreation Department. While I do not have a long lineage in Santa Barbara, I have made my roots here with my family, my career, and hopefully, a long life. I am an active stakeholder in our city and am committed to be here for my family, as well as the families I have an opportunity to serve. I hope that you allow me an opportunity to be of service to our community in this capacity, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Parks and Recreation? Okay, Planning Commission.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Deborah Schwartz, and I'm applying for reappointment to the Planning Commission out of my belief that public service is an important part of community. My reappointment would provide continuity and experienced perspective in the city's land use decisions. Over the past four years, I have taken my appointment to this commission with a strong sense of duty. My attendance record is extremely high, and I am known for doing my homework month in and month out. My consistent participation includes liaison assignments to the Downtown Parking Committee, including annual planning retreats, along with Councilmember Rouse, and the Transportation and Circulation Committee with Councilmember Mario. In 2010, the Planning Commission received thousands of pages of general plan update reading for deliberation and direction to council. As a new commissioner, I studied the entire packet, acquiring the necessary knowledge to productively participate. In 2012 and 2013, I served as an Airport Master Plan Advisory Committee representative to create a new strategic plan. As part of this, I recommended that our general plan's sustainability principles be incorporated into the new airport plan, and the committee agreed. Also during my first term, I raised regional issues such as transportation and environmental resources management. Creating a new general plan's safety element involved increased study of and strategic planning for disaster and resiliency preparedness. In 2013, I chaired the commission's well-received public training on this topic. Two significant projects of note have been the construction of Cottage Health Systems' new hospital and their Bella Riviera workforce condominiums on the former St. Francis Hospital site. Cottage Hospital is our premier healthcare hub, and Bella Riviera is the largest workforce housing project ever built in Santa Barbara. As Mayor Schneider said at this year's State of the City Breakfast, quote, "The city excels when government works hand-in-hand with community leaders and businesses." As a four-year member of the Planning Commission, I have worked hard to translate that mission into personal action. In closing, I would be honored to have your support in order to serve a second term on the Planning Commission. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your past service. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Anyone else for Planning Commission? Okay. Rental Housing Mediation Task Force. Santa Barbara Youth Council. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm, my name is Don Hurl. I'm here to be on the Youth Council. Any questions?
Actually, I don't see, can you tell me your full name again?
Kayden, Kayden Hurl.
Kayden, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
There you are. Great. Wanted, if you maybe express your interest in why you want to serve on the Youth Council?
Well, I feel that I can bring in new ideas and continue to comment on shared or previous old ideas that I'm often never biased towards one side. I always try and see both sides of the argument before I'd create my own. I never jump to conclusions, and I almost always listen to both sides of the argument. And I feel that that is very important, that it is crucial for somebody to behave as such. Because without so, then it just becomes a matter of, you know, two sides brunting together, and that is something that I do not agree with.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I see here you play chess.
Yes, I do.
And what are some of your other extracurricular activities, please?
I'm a music producer. I'm an independent business owner. And before I moved out here, I had volunteered very frequently at my city's minor league baseball stadium. Around the Halloween season, we would convert the baseball stadium into a Knott's Berry Farm-like attraction, and I had started at the age of 11 up until 17. So I, for six years consistently, I had showed up. When I was 11 years old, I started only as a monster. I'd show up and I'd have makeup put on me. And then later on, when I started to get older, you know, I started to help with makeup, and then as I got to be, you know, 15, 16, I was helping with the builds. So I've put in a lot of work there, a lot of it I did not record because I felt that it wasn't needed, and it would have been selfish for me to continuously bring in paperwork because it was just an activity that I was having fun with, and it brought a lot of fun and joy to other people within the community. It was a small city of.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else for the Youth Council? Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Michael Reyes, and I am a 12th grader at Laguna Blanca School, and I am president of the Junior Statesman in America chapter at my school, as well as being enrolled in a leadership class currently at my school. The reason why I want to be on Santa Barbara Youth Council is because I feel like it can help really make an impact to better the community for the youth in our city, and it really catches my eyes. When I, when I saw that, basically, it helps make facilities and make activities for the kids in our community to basically stay out of trouble and to be occupied and to work with, work with others. Because a lot of times, I do community service, and I'm on the junior duty for teen court, and a lot of the kids that are in there are in there because they're, they're in possession of alcohol and drugs, or they're graffitiing, or they're stealing. And I feel like this council can really impact that, help change that in a better way by, by helping make activities available for the kids to be, to be aware and, yeah.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions? Ms. Mario?
I ask what the Junior Statesman group does.
Yeah, Junior Statesman in America is, basically, it helps us kids to talk about issues in our government and in our world, and to help better the world, and it's a debate, basically, between the kids.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Youth Council? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Emily Velez. I'm an 11th grader at Bishop Diego High School, and I'm interested in being a part of the Youth Council because I think it's important for teens to have a voice in the community. I've been in my school student council for the past two years, and I'm currently the school secretary and ambassador, a part of the STEAM Academy, and I play volleyball and soccer. I volunteered at Arts Laguna, Hearts Adaptive, and this year started the Dream Team at Bishop, which is a club that supports the Dream Foundation. If I get elected into the Youth Council, I'll hope to provide good input on city issues involving teens.
Thank you. Any questions? Nope, great, thank you very much. Anyone else for Youth Council? Okay, back up to the As. I know you thought you'd be right up front, but ha, got you there. Access Advisory Committee. Airport, come up, come on up. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Barbara Silver. I was afraid that the As were going to be called first, and I enjoyed getting to sit through everything to this point. I've been a Santa Barbara resident since 1967. I do identify as a person with a disability. I am willing and able to serve as needed. There is a question about my knowledge of the committee, and it's limited to the materials that I've received, but there's some confusion about the membership of the committee. Perhaps you can answer. One, the, the note to applicants said that the committee, excuse me, should have a membership of at least 51% of the membership of the advisory committee must be, must consist of people with disabilities, which seems like a strange percentage for a committee of seven. And the other, the website says two members from the disability community, but it doesn't identify what the disability community actually is, so.
We'll have to clarify that. But you just keep on talking about why you're interested in that.
Okay. It says, committee members should have a demonstrated interest, experience, and commitment to issues pertaining to disability and access, and that is true of me. On the other hand, I'm also interested in creeks and mosquitoes, if that's where they need more people. I have a creek running through my backyard with mosquitoes in it. My qualifications, they list A through E. I have a practical understanding of the federal laws cited, and in the note to applicants, based on my long experience in public services at the UCSB library, working with diverse patrons and staff. I retired in 2000. I have no direct experience performing or overseeing construction as set out in the California code, but understand the practical aspects. I did design an accessible classroom with individual workstations, which is still in business at the library. I've worked with patrons as needed with assistive technologies purchased for their use in the library. I have significant experience working on reasonable accommodation solutions, starting with my own. I have experience relevant to committees. I've been on a number of committees. I was also on the Grand Jury in 1994, '95, and in 1996, I designed the Grand Jury's website and index, the first in the state, and a model for other counties, and also still pretty much as I designed it. Why do I want to serve? Well, this is the month where everybody is asked, being asked, and what can you do for your country? So this is a committee that I feel that I could be effective on.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else for the Access Advisory Committee? Okay, the Airport Commission. Arts Advisory Committee. Come on up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. You've seen me before, talked to you. I'm Tom Berger. Kathy, I haven't met you before. I'm a 22-year resident of the city of Santa Barbara, and I present myself as a candidate for the Arts Advisory Committee. I have the time, and as you'll see, I'm quite motivated. I offer both creative and business credentials for participation. In college, my godmother, a registered nurse, once appined that I had mixed dominance, afraid that it might be fatal. Afraid that it might be fatal, I didn't press her for any details. But as you know, this is a right-brain, instinctual, emotional side of control versus a left-brained, linear, logical side of control. Now, in her defense of her observation, I did complete my college education with a degree in science and a separate degree in liberal arts, so she may have had a point. But this duality let me think outside the box, and it allowed me to help others to think outside the box, and I got a reputation for doing that. And that aided my success in a forty-five-year, largely-left-brain career as an aerospace executive with several blue-chip companies. And it aids my new passion for running my own art company. As an art businessperson, my wife Sherri, who's here with me tonight in a red shirt, and I are currently the proud owners, and by the way, recession survivors, of the Seaside Gallery, a fine art gallery in Pismo Beach. We bought that business just in time for the Great Recession. But during that period of time, we have successfully owned it and operated this business for what local art gallery owner Frank Guss has said are the five worst years he's seen in the art market. However, in this time, we were successful in placing four of our artists and three percent of the art in the Cottage Hospital Call for Artists. This is from our gallery up there, and that's working with the hospital here. To encourage some cross-fertilization of ideas, we have held juried invitational art shows for both the Santa Barbara Art Association and the Malibu Art Association in our gallery in San Luis Obispo County. As an artist, I'm a juried member of the Santa Barbara Art Association, have been for ten or eleven years. And I also belong to the Malibu Art Association and the San Luis Obispo County Arts Council, better known as Arts Obispo. This year, as an artist and not as a gallery owner, I was one of 233 participating artists in the fifteenth annual countywide Open Studios Arts Tour. That is a big event up there. Santa Barbara Arts Tour, by the way, had forty participants, just to give you kind of a relative size. The takeaway from all of this, besides me beating my chest and smiling at you, is that I've come to know something about art and artists and people's awareness and appreciation of art. As much as industry is concerned for better education in math and science, I have discovered since owning an art business that serious art education for the non-artist is nearly nonexistent, but art and science are directly related and mutually supportive. I recommend reading Leonard Schlain's wonderful book, Art and Physics. It's an easy read, and you'll come to see how we have missed that connection. And I really do advise it. People are now using that to teach art and physics at the college level, so it's a very recent and interesting compilation of ideas. So, serving on the Arts Advisory Committee would allow me to share my experience and my expertise about the importance of both art and science in life. Awakening awareness and appreciation of art lets people know it's okay to use the right side of their brain in making daily decisions. A lot of people are afraid to do that. On the committee, my focus and interest would be most likely on promoting public art because of the awareness issues, people's choice art, because I've learned to see that when people have a choice in the art that they can enjoy, they get much more involved in it, and creating legitimate venues for pent-up creativity. Read that as better alternatives to facing property with graffiti. None of this will be new to the Advisory Arts Committee, since they're already doing a good job in all of these directions. However, as a new committee member, I would bring new ideas, energy, enthusiasm, and discipline to these objectives, as well as a feet-on-the-ground business love of art. So if appointed, and I hope you do, both sides of my brain will be fully engaged. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Hotchkiss?
I knew you'd have a question.
You yourself are an artist, are you not?
Yes, yeah.
I wanted to be sure we established that.
Yeah, so artist and art gallery owner, business owner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Madam Mayor, council. My name's Elizabeth Owen. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I am very eager for the opportunity to serve on the City Arts Advisory Committee. I've always had a keen interest in public art and its broad impact on cities. I have an extensive professional background working with artists, plus experience as a public official, a combination that I believe makes me a great fit for this committee. I am currently the vice president at Serbin Communications, an arts publisher on the east side of Santa Barbara. I lead our creative, marketing, and production teams, and I've had the pleasure and challenge of working with hundreds of talented artists over the past twenty years. I live with my husband and two children in the county of Santa Barbara, and I've served on a variety of local organizations and nonprofit boards since moving here in 1984. I was elected to the Hope School District Board in 2004, and I served for four years as a trustee and then as president of the board. I am especially pleased to live and work in a community that places such a high value on the arts and endeavors to make rich public art and cultural opportunities an ongoing part of the planning process. I believe the arts are a great equalizer, and it is essential for a city like ours to promote art that is accessible to everyone. Public art and cultural programs do more than just attract tourists, enhance property values, and define our community's brand and identity. They inspire, educate, and promote meaningful conversations across generational, cultural, ethnic, and socioeconomic boundaries. I've been to several Arts Advisory Meetings. I've found them to be very interesting. I love all kinds of art, especially sculpture and photography, but I really have no specific agenda for the committee. I am quite interested in the development of the Cultural and Public Arts Master Plan. I have a good eye, a broad cultural awareness, and I have the time and energy for this commitment, and I would love to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Sally Sheridan, and I'm a resident of Santa Barbara. I've been here for about fifteen years, and I am a landscape architect with the National Park Service. I've had over twenty-five years as a landscape architect, and I've worked in both the private and public sectors, and that's provided me with quite a wealth of experience working in projects ranging from small parks to large-scale community planning and visioning efforts. Early on in my career, I was a member of the Town of Vale, Colorado Art in Public Places Board when it was just starting up, and that's where I gained the appreciation of the kind of strategic thinking and collaboration that goes into effective arts planning. As part of the National Park Service, I've been instrumental in developing key partnerships to bring artists to all of our community conservation projects, and I've been a consultant in the Arts Build Communities Program for the Oregon Arts Commission. And I developed there several community art plans. I integrated art into park planning efforts and worked on a variety of collaborative design efforts. I've been on both sides of the RFP process. I've written and administered grants, including your town grant for a small town here in California. And locally, I've worked with Sonando, Santa Barbara, a music group here. My daughter played with them for over four years. I'm a budding stone sculptor. I wouldn't say I'm that good, but I certainly enjoy it, and I've participated in Marble Marble Workshop in Colorado for several years. So I believe my experience and commitment to the arts would be an asset to the Arts Advisory Committee. I do have the time and energy to commit to the goals and objectives, and I believe in bringing art to public arenas where it can promote visually diverse and culturally rich environments and can enhance public spaces and contribute to the lives of our residents and visitors. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
What else? I think that's it. Anyone who has not had an interview, need an interview. Going once. Okay, so we are done here, and we will now adjourn to Monday, November 25th, at 1:30 at 510 North Salsi Puerta Street. Thank you very much.